So they've been delivered. So I think you can start now. They're either, they've been delivered. It doesn't mean they've arrived yet in mailboxes, but everything is out.
Okay, hereby call to order the March 17, 2021, meeting of the Coasid School Committee. Happy St. Patrick's Day and evacuation day to everyone. All school committee members that are present, please indicate so in roll call. Mrs. Kaleri?
Present.
Mr. Kearney? Come back to Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar?
Present.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Present.
Mr. Kearney, are you there? He is not. He was a second ago. So we have a quorum and we will note when, so four or five committee members were present at 6:21 and we're convening the meeting.
He's back on Chairman McClellan. He's, he's back in the waiting room. I just, he's joining. It looks like things are just moving slowly for his computer.
Okay, that's fine. This otherwise in-person open meeting is being held virtually via Zoom, though as everyone's been alerted, we're having some technical difficulties. So this is, this is still being streamed live face on Facebook and on Coasid 143 TV. The, in lieu of the Q and E feature that we usually use for the community to communicate with the school committee during these meetings, the vice chairperson, Mrs. Kaleri, has graciously volunteered to monitor Facebook so that people can still make their voices heard, and we hope that you utilize that function throughout the meeting, and we apologize for any inconvenience. The first agenda item, as always, is the public comment. If anyone has any points of discussion or comments related to items that are not on the agenda, please do so now. I'll give you a few moments to do that. Mrs. Kaleri, please let me know if anything comes in, or you can just read it, I suppose. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our superintendent of the school, Dr. Patrick Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan. Oh, excuse me, Dr. Sullivan. Mr. Kearney, you're present now?
Yes.
Here he is at 8:22.
Thank you.
Dr. Sullivan?
Yes, thank you, Chairman McClellan. And again, we want to apologize for our technical issues. I think we bounced back and, you know, hopefully everybody's joining us now on Facebook and are able to ask questions there. And of course, the questions will be channeled on as we, as we move through by Mrs. Kaleri. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. I say there's nothing that I'd rather be doing on St. Patrick's Day than being with the school, at a school committee meeting. But, but then again, you know, this is an important subject matter we have today, and so glad, very glad to be here. Don't have much in terms of an update, other than the fact that our elementary full in-person continues to go very well. We've been in both buildings fully this week and are really impressed with the way the staff and students are adapting to more of them there. Excitement and energy is still palpable and everything is going very well. We, to the, kudos to the good work of Principals Farrell and Principal Sullivan to get that pick up and drop off system working more efficiently. I think we're in a really good spot right now. At least my observations are, it's improved and we're doing better. And the feedback from both families and staff is that things are going well. So I'm very happy to say that. And I do have Jake Squatrito here, who's a member of our Superintendent Student Advisory Council. And we were able to meet a couple of weeks ago, right after our last school committee meeting, to talk about some of their concerns. And Jake, I'll leave it to you to, to give some updates. And then if the committee has any questions for Jake. I'm also, it's my pleasure to have Principal Scott and Principal Mills here. And in addition to the folks who are typically here, Dark Scholons and Sue Owen, to talk about our plans for full in-person reentry at the middle of the high school. So welcome and thank you, Principal Scott and Principal Mills. So Jake, I'll leave it to you to give us an update.
Yeah, so after, after we heard about like returning in person, we emailed Dr. Sullivan, like asking to talk with him. And it was really nice, like being able to talk with him and him fitting that in for us. And we think that was really valuable, just to be able to discuss it. And at first, it was something I heard and I wasn't entirely sure about it, and I didn't know if it was a great idea. But the more I think about it, the more I get like excited for it. So I am hopefully looking forward to going back personally. And I think a lot of people definitely have like, you know, have become accustomed to that idea and are sort of starting to like it more. So I'm looking forward to that and I hope it goes well.
That's wonderful. And I have to echo Jake's sentiments. It was, that was important for me, and I know I speak for Dr. Scholons on that, to hear, hear your initial thoughts. It opened my eyes to a few things and it, and as you know, you do in those positions, you have a strong voice that you're carrying with you from your, from your friends as well. So it was nice to hear what you all had to say. And, you know, we certainly brought that back to the leadership team. And we've actually made some adjustments because of what you, you all mentioned as concerns. And as I, as I had said before, at the last school committee meeting, I think it's really important as we go through this. I know Principal Mills is, is doing this, and I know Principal Scott, I believe is, and certainly will as we go forward, to look at student voice in what, what indeed this means for you as you return. How can we support you? How can we best make sure that your experience in person is safe and is very profitable? So I think student voice is great, and I really appreciate you offering your voice. Any questions for Jake or thoughts for Jake as we, as we embark on this next endeavor?
Ms. Kaleri, any questions? Okay, Mr. Kearney, any questions?
No.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi Jake, thanks so much for your update. After our last meeting, we have received a communication that the student council at the high school was, was going to be doing some polling of, of this high school students. Do you know, did you have a chance to share what you learned with Dr. Sullivan with the student council? Or how was the information that you received from Dr. Sullivan disseminated?
Well, I haven't, unless I'm missing something, I haven't heard of any like sort of surveys or polls. But in terms of information from him, a lot of people heard stuff actually directly from the school committee, like discussing it. And I think some things like got out of hand and some rumors started, but um, I think it's been very direct now, and I think a lot of people understand right now what the plan is. And maybe that's just how naturally it goes, but I think it feels like they've reached out to us and we've just had time to just sort of like understand what's actually happening, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I also think Ellen, that a lot of the polling may happen after this meeting. Because you know, this, this meeting is to present what we've worked on and what plan we have for you. And if the committee wants us to continue with this, you know, I, I am going to push up the vote on this with, with permission of the school committee till the 24th, which is next week. That, you know, that, that would be something that, you know, we could certainly do as we go through this in terms of how, how we can best support students bringing them back. And I know that Principal Mills has started that at the middle school too, that I'm sure we'll get into as we go through this.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, Ms. St. Ange, any questions for, for Jake?
No questions. Just thanks for using your voice. And I'm glad to hear that you guys reached out to Dr. Sullivan. It's just nice to hear how involved you are in every step of the way. So thank you.
Yes, okay. As always, Jake, thanks so much for your participation and your involvement in this, your important part of the, part of the process as well, as always. Thank you.
Great, thank you Jake. So have a great night and you can certainly leave. I know you've got probably a lot of things to do and stay around if you'd like.
Hey, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Jake.
Bye.
Okay. So may I proceed, Chairman McClellan? Next item?
Please do.
Okay, super. So I'm going to share my screen now. And as I, as I, as I said, I want to welcome Principal Scott and Principal Mills. They've throughout the whole year done amazing work. And just as I had the opportunity to thank Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan, when they were here presenting about the elementary full in-person model, I want to thank Principal Scott and Principal Mills for the amazing work they've done all year, leading their teams, collaborating, moving through, changing kind of goalposts, if you will, for what we had to accomplish and what, what the regulations were. They've just done it very skillfully and very professionally. I want to thank, thank both of them. And today, we are, we are going to be presenting a plan for a full in-person return for the middle and the high school. So I'm excited just to be able to do that. I know when we had talked about this some time ago, we weren't sure with the spacing restrictions, what we were going to be able to accomplish. And I know a great deal of effort has been put into place by the teams at both levels to, to create this plan. So I'm very, very proud to present where we are right now. So by way of introduction, we are recommending an increase of in-person learning in grade six through 12 to five days a week, beginning Monday, April 5, 2021, with a basing approach for the high school regarding lunch, pending further operational exploration. So I'm going to be explicit with what that means as we get into this. But in terms of why are we doing this? Some factual points, you know, although our hybrid model has been successful, and I've been very proud of the fact that the middle and the high school, the faculty has worked very well with the leadership to create as synchronous a model as I think you can find around here. Certainly a lot of congruent teaching happening in our middle and high school that haven't been happening in other, other districts. And I think it's, it's had some success, but we all agree that it, you really can't replicate the paramount in-person learning that absolutely helps reduce academic regression and supports the social, emotional needs of the students. I mean, you can certainly see that in our elementary reentry to full in-person and the effect it's had on the students socially, emotionally, and I believe it's going to help them academically as well. This doesn't mean that we're not going to have to prepare for our students coming back to a new model. They've been switching and changing, and we're going to have to support them in that, in that transition. But it's, it's very much worth it in the end from an academic and a social, emotional point of view. Our safety measures have been effective, and I think we have enough of a, of a sample now to say that's, that's the case. And there still has been no spread within our school community. We have only had one case in our entire district-wide school community in three weeks at the middle and the high school. I'm sorry, in three weeks. And this is not at the middle and high school. There have been none at the middle and high school in the last two weeks, and our community rates are dropping. Over the last three, two-week periods, we've had, and this would, of course, is reported each week. We've had 27, 21, and our last report that comes out on Thursday was 16 members in our community who tested positive for COVID. That's 16, so we've gone from red to yellow. The 16 is on the fringe of green. 15 and less for a town of 10,000 people or, or less is in the green category. So we're definitely trending in the white, in the right direction with that. Infection rates among middle school and high school community members have been low. And although we are certainly taking on an additional risk by having students close together, we will still be following the state requirements of three foot distance between students. And I'm going to be able to be very explicit about what that means in a minute, in our classrooms and six feet distance between students at meals. So recently, and this is since our last school committee meeting, the commissioner has come out with some, Commissioner Riley has come out with some very important news and developments. The first came from his Board of Elementary and Secondary Education meeting on March 5. And at that meeting, Commissioner Riley asked for authority to determine when district-wide hybrid and remote learning models no longer count for structured learning time. So he wanted the authority to be able to do that, and he presented some data, some of which I'll be showing you in a few minutes. But his data was met with approval and he was granted that ability. So he's granted the ability to set timelines for districts in Massachusetts about when they needed to come back to, to full in-person model. And that guidance came out on Tuesday, the 9th, so very recently. That guidance, it provided dates for these returns, and you can see them right here. So what he's doing is he's requiring all elementary schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, K to five, to return to full in-person learning with five hours of structured learning time by April 5. Now, of course, we're ahead of that. We were back March 1st, five days a week. And these are, these are five days a week models. Okay, they're not four-day-a-week models. He's, he's requiring five days a week, full days, at five hours of structured learning time per day. The middle school, and of course, like I said, we've been in since March 1st, so we're ahead of that. Middle school, grade six to eight, he's requiring all of this to be in place by April 28. Our proposal that today will put our middle school kids ahead of that. And because, as always, middle schools are, can be looped in under the elementary. There's 900 hours typically that need to be, a year need to be at the elementary of, of learning time and 980 at the secondary level. The middle school is usually looped in with the elementary, and that's the case here. So although he's saying, you know, shoot for 5.5, you're required to do five hours of structured learning time. We'll, we'll be well within that. And then at the high school, you'll note that it's still to be announced. And he says he's going to announce it in April. With, where all of our, the superintendents were all kind of conjecturing and thinking the earliest it would be, would be after April break. But probably early May would be the absolute requirement to come back at 5.5 hours of structured learning. Now, what's also important to understand is that there are consequences for districts that don't do this. And the consequences are that you would have to make up the time. And that time would either have to be made up, according to the commissioner's guidance that came out on the 9th in the summer. It could be made up next year, but the time would have to be made up. That was clear. And waiver opportunities, which are available, are going to be difficult to, to actually get. And they made it very clear that we need to be incredibly creative in trying to meet the 5.5 hours of student learning time, a structured learning time. And if we can't and we have to do a waiver, they'll send the team out to try to work with us. And that could mean a lot of things that aren't necessarily good for kids. So we're trying to do it in, in our own way, with our own scheduling models, and we're really working hard to, to get that done. So I want to present just a bit of research, and I'm going to go pretty rapidly, because this could be a very long presentation. Some of this I've already presented in my earlier presentation about the elementary schools returning full in-person. But essentially, I'm going to focus on two things. I'm going to focus on the date, the research on in-person spread in schools, what that's telling us about the safety of bringing kids back. And then I'm going to talk a lot about three feet versus six feet. Because I mentioned that the commissioner was very explicit about what distancing means. And if you remember, in the survey I sent out, the survey said that we would most likely have to go middle of desk to middle of desk. Well, we know now that we, that's not acceptable, that we're really going to have to look at edge of seat to edge of seat. Is it a big dis, big difference? No. But does it make some difference in the way we set up our classrooms and the spaces we have to use? Yes, it does. But at least we know firmly what the target is, and so we're moving in that way. So in terms of research on in-person spread in schools, in the fall, the American Academy of Pediatrics came out with all kinds of guidance suggesting, to suggest schools coming back and how they should do it in a safe way. They also did an update just a few months ago regarding what their, what, what they thought was safe for kids. Here are some of the highlights. Again, although children and adolescents play a major role in amplifying the flu outbreaks, to date, this does not appear to be the case with COVID-19. This is, this is directly from their guidance. Some countries have been able to successfully reopen schools after first controlling community widespread of SARS-CoV-2, while using three feet of distance between students without increases in community spread. And then there is mounting evidence of low transmission within schools, even in communities with escalating community transmission. And ultimately, I always think this is an important note. The decision to open schools to in-person learning should be based on the joint guidance of local and state public health authorities and school administrators, based on current data in the community, as well as evidence of transmission in schools. And I did present this last time, but it is a compelling study. And, you know, one of the reasons that we are recommending the move back to full in-person is because this data was becoming more apparent to us. And this was a, a major study done on K-12 schools in rural Wisconsin. And it looked at schools that were using what the CDC says are the, the five mitigating factors, using masks, social distancing, quarantining after exposures. And what they found is that 17 K to 12 schools in rural Wisconsin opened and implemented measures to limit spread. During the 13 weeks of in-person learning, they found seven of 4,876 students and zero of 654 staff were known to have gotten COVID-19 at school, school. And no spread is known to have occurred to or from staff in school, despite sometimes with high community spread. This was an important study in showing that, you know, what we're finding in schools is that spread isn't happening often. And that actually, even in communities that have high spread, these schools are, are not having much spread. Again, here's some, some additional data. Findings from several studies suggest that COVID-19 transmission among students is rare. This is an Australian study of COVID-19 cases amongst students and staff, trace contacts across 28 schools and six early childhood centers, and found only 44 secondary positive cases out of 3,439 child contacts and 385 closed contacts. That's from the CDC. And this is a significant study that was available in the fall, but it's still very relevant. It's in a publication called The Lancet, and it found that across 16 countries, social distancing of at least three feet, which is the standard across the world, led to significantly lower transmission rates. They found a significant reduction in this matter of analysis in risk with distancing of at least three feet, but no additional benefit at six feet, as long as the baseline risk is low enough. I should mention that this particular study wasn't really, it was, it wasn't really looking at the difference between six and three feet. That wasn't the goal of it. But it did show that there were some significant positives to just figuring out at least three feet of distance. And this recent study is very important. As I mentioned, Commissioner Riley had a Board of Secondary Edu, Elementary and Secondary Education meeting on March 5. And we're in that, in that meeting, he, he referenced a study entitled "The Effectiveness of Three Versus Six Feet of Physical Distancing for Controlling Spread of COVID-19 Among Primary and Secondary Students and Staff: A Retrospective Statewide Cohort Study." In this study, we, they analyzed infectious control plans and COVID-19 case numbers in 243 school districts across the state, between September 30th and January 7th. So it's a local study and a valuable study. Of those districts, 194 had students spaced at a minimum of six feet and 49 had three feet of distance. And what they found is that there was not a higher rate of cases of COVID-19 in either students nor staff in districts that had students spaced more closely. Here's a depiction of that study. You can see that the top lines here are students and the blue is three feet of distance between students and the gray is six feet of distance. And you can see that they're, they're almost identical and the same as with staff. So these are the student rates and the staff rates at both six and three feet. So that was a very compelling study that just came out. And then over 300 doctors have also signed a letter supporting in-person learning with mitigation measures, including three feet of distance between students when masked. So there's growing recognition that the three feet of distance is the mark to which folks should be setting their minimums, and that there is some safety in that as long as other mitigation practices are put into place. Now, the CDC guidance, now, most, most folks know that CDC came out with, with guidance that was sort of renewed on February 12th. And in this guidance, and they've always said this, that there are five key mitigation strategies that are essential to safe delivery of in-person instruction and to be able to mitigate COVID-19 transmission. One is the universal and correct use of masks. The CDC recently came out with the thought that if you were not able to have a tight-fitting mask, that one should wear two masks, a surgical mask underneath and a mask over that. We're recommending strongly that if folks aren't able to have a tight-fitting mask, that they indeed wear the two masks, and we do have masks that will be available if folks do not have a tight-fitting mask. Physical distancing, again, the CDC absolutely still recommends six feet of distancing, if possible. Hand washing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, and contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine. And we've done some great work with that to keep, I think, students and staff safe since September. Here's some of the major features from their guidance. There is evidence that suggests that K to 12 in-person school attendance is not a primary driver of community transmission. Although children can be infected, can get sick from COVID-19 and can spread the virus to others, evidence indicates that children are less susceptible than adults and may be less infectious. And this becomes important, particularly as our vaccines are just disseminated more readily to our staff. There is some evidence suggesting that risk for opening elementary schools might be less than the risk for opening middle and high schools. Important factor to remember. Data suggests that it is possible for communities to bring down cases of COVID-19 while keeping schools open to in-person learning. And communities that fully implement and adhere to the mitigation strategies I just discussed, especially universal and proper masking, excuse me, will reduce COVID-19 incidents within the community. Those are, as well as within the schools. These are important key findings from the CDC guidance that just came out. Now, what does our local data say? Well, this is important, because remember, it's, that's recommended that we really look at what the local data is telling us in our schools. To date, we've had 19 Coasid High School community members, students or staff, confirmed as testing positive for COVID-19. That's since the beginning of the year. We've had nine Coasid Middle School community members, students and staff, confirmed as testing positive for COVID-19. We've had no known transmissions of COVID-19 within class of public schools. And we have had no cases involving Coasid High School or Middle School staff or students over the past three and a half weeks, almost working on four weeks now. Only one in the district. We have had no spread at any point this year to anyone who was determined to be a close contact in class of public schools. And our confirmed positive data has been consistently lower than the confirmed positive data for our community. And this sort of shows you a trend of where things are moving. So these are the Coasid Middle School and High School community rates of COVID-19 over time. And these, again, are community members, so this would be staff or students who have been tested positive for COVID-19. In September, we had none. October, we had two. November, we had two. December, we had seven. January, we had 14. So you can see the numbers going up. February, we have had, we had three, and we've had none in March. So our Coasid Middle School and High School community, since February 1st, has had three cases. Just so if we can kind of put that in perspective as to what we're trying to do and why we're trying to move in this way. Keep in mind, we have some strong protocols in place. The high-touch deep cleaning, cleaning of classrooms between student use, our restroom protocols and automatic soap and towel dispensers. We have systematic waiting rooms that are, I'm sorry, symptomatic waiting rooms that are separated from where other students might come in to use the nursing areas. Our hand cleaning and sanitizing protocols, there's hand sanitizer available inside and outside of classrooms. We do have the directional markings in the hallways. We have a very strict rule around wearing masks. We limit, we've limited outsiders to entering the buildings. We have always stuck to whatever the guidance is regarding spacing in our classrooms and at lunch. And we do have appropriate distancing and protocols followed on our buses. Keep in mind that recently, those distancing requirements were taken away. So there is no... Keep in mind that recently those distancing requirements were um taken away, so there is no. Just that there are no distancing requirements on our buses, there's still assigned seats. And in uh communities with high prevalence, there's only, you're only allowed to have two per seat. At the middle and the high school, but with the size of the kids in the middle of the high school, you are pressed to get more than two in a seat anyway. Uh vigilance, close contact tracing and protocols implemented by our nurses and our travel, travel pro- protocols and. Before the end of this presentation, I will emphasize again the importance of all of us um paying attention to those travel protocols. This is important because we have been able to um add portable air cleaners to the spaces in our buildings that have needed it. Um, one of the things we've agreed to with the CTA is if there are additional needs based on. Uh, our readings from Bala Engineering uh in new spaces, we might be using that we would indeed uh increase those PACs into those areas. Um, and what PACs do is they increase the air changes per hour. Uh, the standard by the Chan School at Harvard was five air changes per hour, and of course, that's having air come in and then air leave a room. That air changes per hour is enhanced when you're able to open windows and um of course, PACs can increase that as well. They also, they, in, in addition to the um ACH, they're able to improve air quality and reduce airborne contaminants. So these are going to be, you know, important to have no matter what, uh even in post-COVID times, they'll, they'll improve air quality and reduce airborne contaminants. We also have partnered with Cambridge Innovation Center um for health to test our staffs, we're into a second week now. Of testing for staff and any staff member who wants to be voluntarily tested can be tested and will receive their results within twenty-four hours, that's going very well. And then I'm happy to say that we've had significant progress in teacher vaccinations. Um, I believe this, I can say this confidently based on information that's been provided to me, not only by the CTA, but um other teachers. To date, many if not most of our educators and staff have had at least their first shot for vaccination. Um, you don't really get to choose what shot you get, you know, some people may get the James Johnson Johnson, which is one shot. Or you might get the Pfizer or the Moderna, which are the two shots. We were able to have a hundred educators receive vaccinations uh at the Marshall Fairgrounds last Friday. And our front offices and PSO has worked really hard in helping educators acquire appointments. Uh, those educators who want them and then, you know, a shout out to the educators themselves. Who have worked hard to get their own vaccination appointments when they became available. But as we stand right now, we're in a good spot with educators having at least one shot of the two, uh if not, like I said, uh both. So I want to get into the survey data and then we'll talk about the operationalizing of all of this, so the survey data you're about to see. Um, it fifty percent of the respondents were from the middle school and fifty percent were from the high school. It, it just worked out that they're almost exactly the same. This doesn't indicate that only fifty percent of middle school families answered and only fifty percent of high school families answered, it's actually the opposite, this is just. Um, a pictorial uh of how many, of the percentage of, of families who actually answered the survey. And the way we put the survey out, it wasn't a survey being answered by, uh you know, if you had four kids in the high school, you didn't get four votes, you only got one. For having a student in the high school. And it's the same for the middle school, if you had a student in the middle school, you, you, you got one and we. We went through and filtered them to make sure that that was the case. And I'm going to go over some of the, the um, the answers in a minute, but I want everyone to remember that when we sent out this survey. It was actually kind of a worst-case scenario. Because when I sent out the survey, I, a couple of factors, I had said that um we would have the desks, middle of desk to middle of desk, and we now know it's going to be a little bit further. In our spacing, so that may have weighed on people's minds in answering the survey. Uh, and we also, we weren't guaranteeing that we were going to have buses. And I had put out there that, you know, we wouldn't, we would only have buses for sixth grade and that has changed, we're now able to offer full busing. So perhaps some of these answers would have been uh even more affirmative, but I think there's compelling evidence as we get into this. So this is an overall based on all the contingencies that I put out, this is the middle and high school combined. And the question is, would you send your children to school if full and personal learning was implemented? At the high school, middle school on April fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and we had eighty-seven, eighty-seven percent say yes. And thirteen percent say no, and I'll get to the raw numbers in a second. At the high school, this is just the high school now, if you separate that, the numbers are a little lower than at the middle school. Would you send your children to school if full in-person learning was implemented at the high school? We had eighty-three percent say yes and seventeen percent say no if the date was the fifth of April. And at the middle school, the answer was ninety percent said yes and ten percent said no. So it just gives you a, uh, an idea of where, where we're all coming from on this and, and here are the raw numbers that you can see. You know, there, there was the CHS families, two hundred and fifty-six said yes, fifty-two said no, middle school was two hundred and eighty-three said yes. And thirty said no, and there's your total, and that's where we came up with the fifty percent uh roughly from each school. So now we're going to go over some major considerations in our operations and I'm going to ask Principal Scott and Principal Mills to. Obviously chime in when we get to talk about their individual schools. So these are our major considerations when it comes right down to it, it's our remote learning options and what we're going to do for folks if they do need to quarantine. You know, we recognize that although we've been under six feet at the middle and the high school in virtually. Uh, every space since September, moving even closer to three and actually exactly at three. Um, would probably um and most likely result in more quarantines. Uh, i- if that happens, I want everyone to be clear with that. Um, and we'll talk about that in a second, we're also going to talk about spacing, scheduling and lunch. Transportation, drop off and pickup, and then our Boston students, what that will look like for them and what it will look like for them at the high school. And all of this will be put in the context of a phased approach. And we'll, we'll get to that as we go through it. So first, our remote learning options, so our remote learning options will be limited, we will be following uh the guidance of um the commissioner. And um, I'm going to let um Dr. Scholes talk a little bit about our remote options, just so everyone gets a clear. Uh, clear picture and I don't misspeak and of course, Dr. Scholes is on here as the person to contact by Monday, twenty-second. If you indeed at home want your child to be in a full remote program, so.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, so we do have um the remote option of the Greenfield Commonwealth Virtual School. Which is a school that we are also contracting with just like TECA. Um, but I will tell you that it is limited as Dr. Sullivan said, and as. Um, if your child were to transition to that, they would get four courses, one in ELA, one in math, one in science and one in social studies. So there's a little bit of a different format. Um, and it's fine, it's just that it is limited and I want, I want everyone to know that it's, it will just be based on those four courses, so if your student was taking. Six or any kind of electives, those would not be an option within the remote learning um option that we have with TECA or um Greenfield Commonwealth Virtual School, so. Um, it, so it could be either one of those, um I spoke with Dr. Sullivan today, we had a couple of students that have. Transitioned out of TECA, so there are a couple of spots there too, so, um, but that'll be on, based on what the needs of the student are when, if you, if you need it. So please just um email me and we'll set up a time to talk and I can give you all the information that you need.
We'll see this later in the timeline, but again, we're asking that this information be um sent to Dr. Scholes via email by Monday, March twenty-second. Um, learning during quarantine situations and, and this is, I, I wanted to be really clear about this, that. There should not be an expectation for synchronous nor concurrent learning. Synchronous would be something like a live streaming scenario. Nor concurrent learning where you have a teacher teaching the students in front of him or her and also teaching the students who might be at home. So there should not be an expectation for either of those models for students who are not present in person. This includes during quarantine situations. Work will be provided, but it will most likely be asynchronous in nature. There, there may be opportunities, but I, I want people to understand that this is the expectation as we move forward with that.
Specifically for people that are quarantined, correct?
Yeah, it's for anybody who, who would be absent or including quarantine. We wouldn't have anybody who would be receiving any type of synchronous learning necessarily. It would, anything would be, everything would be asynchronous in nature in terms of the work would be provided for them.
Okay.
That makes sense?
It does, I was wondering, sometimes people take vacation, I didn't know if you were including that, you're just talking about kids that are sick or quarantined.
Yeah, I mean, it, exactly, this is, this is anybody who's out, but it's not, we're not, the rules around vacations are the rules. Um, and this is about spacing, of course, I, I mentioned this, that the update, updated guidance is. To set up classrooms with desks at least three feet apart with students' desks facing the same direction as a default. Doesn't mean you can't do a turn, turn and talk multiple times throughout a, a classroom. The three-foot distance is measured seat edge to seat edge, front to back and side to side. So now, um, looking at the middle school with all student presence, present, there would be a range. And again, with the minimum distance being three feet from edge of seat to edge of seat. And I'll let Principal Mills talk about this and what you anticipate for your spacing. Uh, considerations at the middle school, and this is a picture of one of our larger rooms to be completely transparent. Uh, they might be our largest room at the middle school uh for classroom, but this is twenty-eight desks, it just gives you a sense of. You know, they, they're going to be fairly close together, but still abiding by that three-foot separation, so Principal Mills, go ahead and add anything you'd like to in that.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, I think one of the biggest differences between uh the model that we'd be going into within person. And the way we had to set up classrooms for the hybrid originally. Is originally, we gave it a minimum of three feet between the edge of desks. As you, as you look at this, it's the horizontal plane that students would write on or put their device on. Um, it's much wider than the seats and um we comfortably and safely put everybody in classrooms. Um, you know, we faithfully followed that, uh, we, we worked hard last summer to keep. Our class sizes consistent and small, so we didn't have some big, some, some small. They're all consistent, so um we had no problem with that. Uh, now that they've uh, I'll reexamine this and redefine that distance. Uh, we pressure tested or, or sort of, you know, went into each classroom to. Situate the desks uh to see uh what three feet between uh the seats, edge of seat to edge of seat. Looks like in every classroom uh and specifically the largest section in each classroom. Um, I don't foresee having any trouble, you know, meeting that and, and keeping kids uh. Safe in the classroom, uh, you know, we'll be able to keep that three-foot distant um, distance between the seats, so uh. We're excited to have the kids come back, I think the kids are as, as, you know, as well as the faculty, so uh we, we'll do it carefully and, and with an eye on um. Following that, that guidance.
That's great, and again, thanks to the teams for working on this. Um, at the high school, the, and I'll invite uh Principal Scott to talk about this, but there are some, some bigger obstacles. Uh, our rooms are smaller, our class sections tend to be larger. And we're really trying to create a situation where we can um not uh change our current schedule. That's the last resort, we don't want to do that, we want to be able to keep our current schedule because of the continuity of learning. Uh, the relationships that have been built between teacher and student. So um, as I mentioned, with the middle school, it'll be the same distancing requirements. But the spacing concerns at the high school are a major obstacle for us to bring the high school students back more in person. And we will be exploring the spacing over the next week. That's really one of the major considerations, we, we need to just make sure we iron out before we have the final vote on the twenty-fourth. Um, and I'll let uh Principal Scott talk about that as we kind of look at a picture, and this is, I think, twenty-four desks. In a typical, and I think this is very average uh high school classroom, so take it away, Principal Scott.
Yes, so um, thank you, the spacing definitely is our biggest concern and, you know, unlike. Elementary and, and to so a certain extent, middle schools. Our kids have a variety of classes that have a variety of sizes, so we go from six in an AP French class to thirty-two in an AP Lit class. Um, this room here holds between twenty-four and twenty-five desks, that's a typical room size. Um, and if you, if you look, you can see that some of the desks are going almost all the way to the board, all the way into the corners by the door, so it's about as tight as it comes. We have forty-seven sections, which is about a third of our sections that we're currently offering that are twenty-five or bigger. So our rooms can't necessarily accommodate all that, we have to look at alternative spaces, we have to look at things like the cafeteria, we're using the upper lobby. Um, and so our teachers and our department heads have been really working hard to try to figure out alternative configurations. One of the things that, that we're looking at with a room like this is to turn the desks horizontally. And most, some of the classes have a whiteboard on the sidewall, so they wouldn't necessarily see the projector. But you can probably fit another four or five desks, so it's, it's definitely tight, um, you know, we think we can do it uh without. Enormous disruption, but it, it, you know, it is definitely going to be tight.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it, it is a, it is a chore and we are going to have to, you know, be very creative with spaces. We're not alone, I mean, there are, there are a, a lot of communities like ours that are. Uh, don't have ample space in classrooms to, to really do this and we're, we're being as creative as we possibly can. Um, but it's, it's a very tough task and uh I appreciate the work that's being done to, to accommodate this. Um, so here's our phases, this is what we're proposing. Is we're proposing that the first phase would be April fifth, two thousand twenty-one. So at, in that phase, we would have students at the middle school return for full and personal learning, five days a week. Full days with lunch being served in the building. We get to the scheduling in a second, but that, that would be what it would be for the rest of the year for our middle school kids. So they really only have one phase. The high school, uh, we, we were recommending a couple of phases and we'll talk about why. Students at the high school uh will return for in-person learning. Uh, this is on the, the fifth of April, will be dismissed at twelve forty-five PM. Will have busing if, if they have requested it. Will eat lunch at home and then join their last class via Zoom from one fifty-five to two fifty-five, five days a week. So rotating schedule, so it'll be a different class each day. April break, um, I'm sorry, April fifth through April break, this is really a temporary phase at the high school. Until we can be completely prepared for our next phase. Which for the high school will come, it, what we're proposing right now, right after break, so this is April twenty-sixth. And at that point, we feel this may be indeed when the commissioner asks us to have to abide by that five-point-five structured learning hours. We'll have um a couple of options. Number one would be that students would return on April twenty-sixth at the high school. Being served lunch in the gymnasium, an outside tent area that we're working on. Um, and if, if needed, you know, obviously the cafeteria, but we'll, we'll, some combo of those. They'd be dismissed at two forty PM, they participated in all their classes. And they'd make the five-point-five hours of in-person learning, starting at a stagger, we're going to, we'll get into that in a minute, but we're going to start the. Classes at eight fifteen at the high school, middle school, eight thirty at the, at the high school. Or if we can't create scenario number one, and I feel like we're gonna, but if this for some reason we couldn't. Whoop, sorry, we would move to scenario number two, which is on the twenty-sixth, we'd bring our students in. Serve them some kind of meaningful snack or they'd be able to eat some kind of meaningful snack. They'd be dismissed a little bit earlier at two PM, they'd be given a grab and go lunch, just like they will on April fifth, by the way. When they're leaving, um, when, when they're leaving during those two weeks, they'll be able to get a grab and go, go lunch. And um, we would have them eating the grab and go lunch at home. But we would, as we'd stay till two, we would get those five-point-five hours that are required of us um in. And the basic logic, and then I'll just open it up to, to Principal Mills, Principal Scott to talk about the logic of this, they want to add anything. But the phasing approach allows us the time to have all the ordered furniture in our buildings. And tents outside of our buildings ready to go to accommodate our dual lunch situations. Can't stress enough, these are shared, shared common spaces, it's an added complication for us. It allows for some after-school offerings to continue at the high school. And then it allows lunch staff to make adjustments that are safe for all students as we think about having our. Uh, getting our middle school lunch going appropriately, they're going to be adding an additional lunch. And then we're thinking about what it's going to look like for the high school lunch happening on the heels of the middle school lunch. Making sure we have all our protocols in place for that uh eventuality. Principal uh Scott, anything you want to add to that, and then I'll let Principal Mills add anything to the logic here.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a couple of things that, that are important to me, one is. Yeah, I mean, I think there's a couple of things that, that are important to me. One is we want to maintain as, as close to our current schedule as possible. The, the routine that kids have built in uninterrupted, uh, throughout all of the various incantations of this has been important. And it, it's in the best interest of, you know, social emotional wellness. Everybody likes to kind of have a sense of how the day is going to go. We haven't had to make dramatic changes to that. So that's important to me. The second reason is that we don't have the latest guidance from the commissioner. And if we, if we delay the start of lunch until April break, that aligns better with our quarter. So especially for our seniors who want to get that third quarter report card out to schools to upset the apple cart when you don't really have to. Seems unnecessary and might necessitate more changes if the guidance does come out and there are additional or different restrictions to it. So that's important. And as you mentioned, um, you know, all of the desks that we have in the cafeteria now are going back in the classroom. So we have to order another 230, um, tables for students to eat. We can't use the, the big cafeteria tables. So half of those have come in. We have another half that are, that are coming in, but, um, you know, those are some of the important reasons for me for the stagger. I'm happy to talk about lunch and why we're looking at doing it the way we're doing it if, if now's an appropriate time or I can wait.
Yeah, I think if we get to your scheduling, that'd be a great time to talk about it. Just to reiterate what Principal Scott said, you know, we, we, we haven't been given the timeline for the high school yet, just to be clear on that. But of course, we're trying to get as many kids in as we can, um, appropriately spaced. So that I have to just reiterate that on April 5th, everybody would be coming in five days a week. They'd just be going home for lunch in their last period. It's on April 26th when they'd be able to stay for the full day. Um, Principal Mills, you want to add anything to that?
No, I, I, you know, what I would, uh, I, I would echo Principal Scott as far as I think the overriding logic that we all used in, in building these plans and, and the high school, like the middle school incorporated a collaborative, you know, uh, approach, working with faculty to come up with a plan. But the idea was to try to keep things as consistent as possible so that, uh, it's been a hard enough year on, on students and, and faculty and families. Uh, we didn't want this transition to be, you know, made up of, of a whole bunch of, um, uh, you know, really, uh, you know, disjointed or traumatizing changes. We kind of wanted to make it a smooth transition. So I think we both approached it as, you know, let's make it as familiar as possible and, and as smooth as possible.
Great. So as we move to scheduling at the middle school, um, Principal Mills, I'll let you talk about your schedule. And this will be the schedule from April 5th on. Am I correct in that?
That's right. Yeah. April 5th really, uh, is our, our, our transition day. And then we maintain that transition to the end of school. The features with this schedule, you know, we maintain the current schedule that we have. It's not the schedule that we've had in years past. But, uh, you know, we discussed it and our, our kids are used to it now. Um, the faculty is used to it. So we're going to, we'll maintain the overall, uh, the structure.
Are the dogs joining you, Principal Mills?
Yeah, the dogs are joining me.
Hey, that, you can't do anything about that.
We did, um, move lunch, uh, back, uh, a little bit in the day, uh, where we have seven periods. Previously, the lunch and utility period was after the third period and then there'd be four periods afterwards. And based on faculty and student feedback, it was a long time. It was, it was a time of, you know, towards the end of the day. You know, it started, you know, it's just natural, I think, to start tiring, um, so that those four classes, um, were tough. So listening to that feedback, we shifted to the morning. We did add a third lunch and it's organized by grade now. Previously we had two lunches, which we could do with one cohort. We could easily fit, uh, um, one cohort broken in half into two lunches. With the whole school coming back, that just, it, it wasn't going to work. So we had to add a third lunch organized by grade, which is kind of nice because we always did have a grade broken in half, um, because of the two lunches. So now, uh, that was seventh grade. Now a seventh grader who, uh, you know, might, uh, have a utility class. Uh, and eats first lunch and has utility second, uh, but boy really wanted to work with their math teacher. But the math teacher had the opposite lunch and utility. He or she wasn't able to meet with that teacher. So I think this is appreciated, uh, I think quite a bit by the, uh, students and, and teachers in the seventh grade. We do have a, uh, additional utility time now with the third lunch, like the amount of utility time increases. Uh, and we're planning, uh, you know, in teams and as a faculty for how we can best organize that and use it as time to make sure kids, you know, have academic support, they continue to progress academically, but also build in mask break time, especially as the weather improves. Individual classes would have a little bit more time to, um, during utility to, to use our campus outside. Where did the time come from to add a lunch? We did have to shorten, uh, the instructional periods, but just by three minutes. And then at the end of the day, we did have to shorten dismissal time to accommodate the fact that we have more kids on our buses. There are more buses, loading will take a little bit of, of time and then they'll have to, um, be available to pick up at the elementary school.
Yeah. And keep in mind that elementary, because of those transportation restrictions are, it is a staggered start. So it does, it, it does put a premium on giving a couple of more minutes. So I think that was important to afford within the schedule. And I should emphasize that our outdoor spaces and all these schedules are going to be maximized, um, as they were, as they were in the fall. Probably even more because I think we know how to use them better now, um, than we did in the fall. But thank you, Principal Mills. Um, and now as we move to the high school, it's a little more complex because there are two scheduling models. So this is the proposal from, um, phase one, starting April 5th until April break. So I'll let you talk through this, Principal Scott.
Right. So we're basically talking about two weeks to get us to the end of the quarter. And then we have that April vacation or school vacation week to help us prepare for that second phase. This schedule is very similar to our current schedule. We've delayed the start to 8:30, which is going to allow for decreasing congestion in the morning. Bus students will still come in on the buses. They'll go right to class at 8:15. Our teachers will be in the rooms. We'll just delay the start of the class until everybody's there at 8:30. We eliminated the long breaks in the middle. Five minutes between passing times in our building is, is plenty, especially if kids are able to get outside. They're potentially able to eat a snack outside, uh, in a way that's a little bit safer than the current model, which has them up in, in the upper lobby. And while they can go to the cafeteria or the gym and some do, they really kind of cluster. And it's the unstructured times are a lot harder to manage, uh, because they're shorter. Students are apt to take their mask off, have a snack, spacing them out is a little bit different. So to double the volume makes that a bit, a little bit tougher to, to manage. So we're cutting down the, the longer breaks, still have long enough breaks in between classes. Teachers will also, I'm sure, especially when the weather gets warmer, take, take classes outside, have mass breaks out there, potentially as part of class. And then, as you said, students are dismissed at 12:45 and we'll eat lunch at home and come back in remotely for that last period. So we're really talking about two of each class periods over the, over those two weeks.
Perfect. Thank you. And then this is the phase two scenario. If you, this would be after April break. This is with the lunch.
Right. So this is incorporating lunches back in. The schedule is essentially the same as the prior schedule with the delayed start and the elimination of the long breaks. There's a couple of different ways you can do lunches. And the first way would be to expand them. So if we expanded the lunches and Mr. Mills had to expand the lunches, we're talking about anywhere between six and eight lunches over the course of the day, which could run from, you know, 10:30 to two o'clock, uh, all the way through. That isn't ideal. The other thing that we would have to do, because I can't create a utility block that is so long that I'm decreasing instructional time and having kids sit in an hour and a half of utility a day. I'd really have to create a static block. So if there are five periods in the day, that fourth block becomes static. We divide it into three lunches, but kids wouldn't be able to go by grade level because we have mixed level courses. So I can't have a chemistry class, for example, that sends half of the kids out for first lunch and half of the kids out for second lunch. I would have to organize lunches by course, uh, and try to balance it that way. That seemed a bit unnecessary to me. Um, so I wanted to try to do it within two lunches. Doing it in two lunches allows me to keep essentially the current schedule that we have. Cut down the lunchtime to an appropriate level. The lunches right now are too long. And the result is that students finish eating early and they're up all over the place. That's fine if we can get outside, but we don't have the space if I have to put everybody in the gym. So in order to do this, it's going to need to be a little bit more tightly controlled than we're currently doing it. Put 180 kids in the gym, put another 50 in the calf or out in the back tent, depending on the weather. Obviously if the weather's nice, we don't need 180 in the gym. We can go on the backfield, uh, and eat lunch that way. But this allows kids to eat together by grade level because we can still offset it with utility. I wouldn't have faculty to supervise that because the faculty who are not eating their contractual lunch are monitoring kids in utility. But this also allows us, if we delay it till after break, it allows us to keep the use of the gym for gym classes, but also for things like volleyball. And allows us to get the furniture and then set up, um, going forward. The final period is a little bit of an early dismissal, uh, because the lunches are shorter, the length of the period is the same. It just gets out at 2:40. That's going to allow our bus kids to get on the bus. It's going to make it easier for our district transportation to get to the elementary schools. Uh, and it's just a little bit cleaner that way.
That's great. And I, I, what I, one of the things I really appreciate in Principal Mills and in this schedule, uh, is that you're really considering lunchtimes. And now they're in a, a time pocket. Granted, the high schools are a little later, but you know, talking about the middle school, uh, 11, 11 o'clock to 12:30. And these lunches, I, I think are more, uh, practical too, in terms of the times that they're being held than what you just presented with the, you know, the lunches happening all day model. So I, I appreciate this, if we can make this happen. Oops, I am frozen. There we go. Okay. And then of course, this is, uh, scheduling, um, at the high school phase two. This is a sort of a fallback scenario, uh, if we can't do the lunches successfully. And I, as we go further and further, we, we, I think we feel more confident we're going to be able to do the lunches. But if we can't, here's a thought about what we do. You want to talk about this, Brian?
Yeah, this is the, the less desirable of the two. Um, it's just a long time to go without having a meal is, is the biggest thing. You know, lunches are easier to manage, even if they're longer than the break periods. And so if, even if you have a snack and you have an extended break, uh, the kids just don't sit down. It doesn't have that lunchtime feel to it. So, you know, we could, we could do something like that. We could potentially, uh, look at alternative spaces and have a more controlled break, but I don't think that gives the kids what they're looking for. Uh, and I don't think, um, I think kids would be hungry, you know? So.
But we can make it work in a pinch. Um, and of course they will get the grab and go to eat at home, uh, in this model. So, um, this is again, is just a pictorial of, uh, what the, what the lunchroom looks like. And, uh, we would have assigned seats for our middle school and they would be six feet apart. And that would be, I guess it's 11 o'clock, correct? Not 11:11. John, um, anything you want to add here? I think that's pretty self-explanatory of it.
No, I, I think, uh, like you say, it's, it's self-explanatory. I mean, we're in a good routine with our lunches now. Kids come in, they eat. And as you see, even though they're six feet apart, um, you know, kids are able to, to talk to their friends. We've allowed them to choose their own seats. So they are around their friends. And then after they're done, after they've eaten completely, um, they can discard any trash. And then, um, we've used the fields out back and we've done it pretty consistently throughout the, the winter. Unless it was like brutally cold or super wet or, you know, um, or certainly like super snowy. And, and it's, you know, the weather continues to improve. Uh, you know, we look forward to that and that's a great mask time and a chance to get up and move around. So I, I think the kids have become accustomed to, uh, you know, the lunches as we've set them up this year. And I, I think they've been pretty successful, you know, given, you know, the conditions that we're working with.
Great. And then of course, we'd have the grab and go ready for those two weeks. Principal Scott, correct? Kids could take as they're going out of the building. Great. And our staffing implications, uh, other than potentially volunteers helping with high school supervision of lunch, uh, which we may or may not have to get to, we really don't feel there'll be any staffing implications in terms of adding staff to make this happen. So the committee knows at either the middle or the high school.
And I think it's important, you know, for context, which I know a lot of people won't have. We haven't had to undo and rebuild our schedule like some other schools. So we, we've had a schedule that's pretty consistent. We don't have to pull kids out of classes. We don't have to switch teachers. We don't have to, um, you know, modify when classes meet or how many meet. So, you know, from that perspective, I like that. I'm proud of the, the teachers and the department heads have been able to kind of take a look at and put together. And I think it's going to provide a good level of consistency to close out the year for everybody. So that's, um, that's a really good thing. I don't know how those other schools are doing it, to be honest.
No, and I totally agree that I, I, the, I, I would love to be able to keep that. I think that's a great thing to strive for. And, um, and I'm confident we're going to be able to do it. Transportation. So, um, as I mentioned, that there's relaxation of the bus, uh, social distancing requirements. We are now able to provide busing for anyone who said they wanted a bus, um, from the middle or high school. And, uh, we will have a route for middle and high school students coming in at 8:15. High school students, uh, would be, as, uh, Principal Scott mentioned, supervised in their classrooms before school officially starts at 8:30. And I, I should mention, Will, at dismissal, uh, we would have a couple of routes to begin with. On April 5th, we'd have the, um, the routes, the, the route that leaves at 12:45, bringing just our high school students back. And then the route that leaves at 2:40 or thereabouts for our middle school students. During early dismissal, we just have one afternoon route, which, and we dismiss both buildings at 12:30. So drop off and pickup. What we're asking is that, um, it's at the usual time and drop off for both schools. Cars at the middle school would be a cohort A and B, the, uh, I should say bus drop offs at the usual time. Cars at the middle school, both cohort and, uh, A and B will use the gymnasium driveway at 8:15. And high school, uh, unless you're of course driving as a student, you would use the gymnasium driveway for drop off at 8:30. Try to keep that stagger, but all of our drop offs happening at the, um, gymnasium entrance. Our pickup for buses would be at 12:45 from April 5th through April break for the, the high school students. And at 2:40 for the middle school students, with the high school students joining that route, essentially joining their morning route, if they took a morning route. On April 26th, cars, uh, at CHS and cars at the middle school would use the gymnasium driveway for pickup. Anything, uh, Principal Mills or Principal Scott to add with this?
No, I think it's important for the middle school parents to understand the shift to the back of the school is based on the fact that we're going to have, uh, at, at least twice as many buses as we do now. So in the morning, when they pull in, they're going to wait and hold kids until 8:10. In other words, effectively freezing the front of the building. So we can't use that for drop off. Uh, unless you're coming in after 8:15 with, and your child's late. It's the same thing, uh, you know, a pickup time after school. This should, where the driveway, the gymnasium driveway is much longer, it should allow us to keep our traffic from backing up on the pawn street and hopefully benefit the neighborhood. So it's a little bit of a change, but I know, um, you know, we'll make the adjustment.
Yep. And just like the elementary, you know, just going to ask for some patience in the beginning. It will get better. It got better at the elementary and we'll, we'll get through it. I'm confident. Um, our Boston students, our Boston students, the bus is going to continue for Boston students at the current time. There's going to be supervision in the morning for the high school students, just like everyone else. When they come in at 8:15, lunch will be served to Boston students each day. This includes the, and this really, of course, will be served every day, but the, the time, um, we're not going to be able to provide our Boston students with transportation separately at 12:45. So they would be staying, um, for those two weeks. We'd provide them with lunch and then there'd also be provided a place to zoom in for their last period before joining the middle school students, uh, from Boston, uh, on their, their, uh, bus that's shared. And then, um, the middle school Boston students would follow a regular day schedule, uh, starting April 5th to the end of the year. Couple of logistics. This is about skipper school for staff who have students who attend CMS, CMS or CHS. It will continue and it will be really blended in with our, uh, Boston students for those two weeks and it will continue. And it will continue as long as we have that, that shortened period of time anyway. And will there be additional PPE? As I mentioned, yes, we were looking to provide any PACs to spaces that may need it during that phase. And I did mention this and I'll reassert it, that tight fitting masks are really important. Students and staff may consider two masks. We have additional masks for anyone who needs one. And we'll be looking to make sure that the students at least have a tight fit, if not two layers of masking. Well, there can be a question, I'm sure, about after school activities. It's really going to be based on teacher availability. And that includes staying for a particular class in the two week period at the high school. There might be a Zoom situation. It's really going to be up to the teacher. I don't want to guarantee it, but i- i- am I, am I safe in saying that, Principal Scott? I don't want to speak to something you guys haven't really talked about.
In the two week model, in the first phase?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to, you know, we lose a couple of things that we're currently doing in terms of tiered support and some of the teacher help. So we're going to have to treat it the way we treat everything pre-COVID, COVID, just on an individual basis and, and work with the teachers to find arrangements that are best for each individual student.
Yep, makes sense completely. You know, that includes students who might be struggling. You know, we want to try to continue to help them if we can as well. And then I mentioned about the quarantine and that whole procedure. So I don't need to go into that again. But special education, how will it be scheduled? And the answer here, I think, that applied to the elementary applies to the middle and high school as well. The implementation of special education services for all of our students will follow all of the safety and social distancing protocols while meeting the required services outlined in students' individual educational programs. Now, looking ahead, this is from the state. This is what they guaranteed us. But it really mirrors what we're going to be doing moving forward in the spring, really looking at providing supports for our students for mental health. You can see that the state has pledged some help with FAFSA completion, supports for seniors who didn't meet the competency determination requirement that doesn't play in for us at all. The summer, a stand up robust summer school programming and academic interventions. Dr. Scholz will be talking about this at a further and future school committee meeting regarding programming. We will have this summer to help fill any learning gaps and to help any student who wants help. It's very exciting. And then, believe me, we'll be working this summer to plan for the fall to make sure we adjust any content based on data that we, that we come up with that tells us where we need to help our students and always focusing on the whole child, the needs, mental and physical health, in addition to academics. And I know some of our professional development this week is really regarding looking at our learning gaps in our curriculum to make sure we identify where we need to go, not only in the spring, rest of the spring, but in the summer and the fall. And then I just want to reemphasize this before we open it up to the committee and any questions. You know, just a reminder that we're really all in this together. This is not going to succeed unless we all take this very seriously. And that includes wearing masks, staying distance when appropriate to do so, avoiding parties, large gatherings, travel, there'll be time for travel later. Really be careful and support each other because as we get tighter in distance, the quarantining can become greater if we're not really careful. And, you know, we, we all are, we're dependent on each other for the safety of everyone. Really, it comes down to individual choices and family decisions. So I, I can't emphasize enough the importance of all of us being in this together to help what we all feel is, is most important. It's our kids and our students. So thank you for, for thinking of that. And then just our timeline, just looking forward here, you know, we, we are beginning to move furniture in tomorrow and Friday. Hopefully, we don't have any snow, but we'll have our, our furniture moving in sort of full force. Will give us kind of our final moving. We've already ordered a lot of furniture. A lot of furniture is due to arrive on Monday and later this week. That's important. And the high school bus routes and middle school bus stops and routes have been created or are just about created and we'll be getting those out to those who requested it very soon. And then we will, on the twenty-fourth, of course, be delivering a, a very brief, just probably a couple slide presentation, just to kind of tie things together for a school committee vote. And I did mention that by March twenty-second, we like any parent, any families who want their student to go full remote to contact Dr. Scholz at her email. And then again, we'll be working until April first and April fifth to really work with students, to orient them, to get their opinions on what we need to make sure we help them with as we transition. Talk, keep, continue to talk to staff, talk to the CTA, you know, particularly about the after break plans, which, you know, the, we haven't really talked as full about in, in the, in, as the other things. And then really look at implementing on April fifth in our first phase and then our references. So at this, this time, I'll, I'll stop and I will invite the committee, if you're still awake, to come back to, to ask any questions or I'll let you take it from there, Chairman McClellan. And I know that Mrs. Cleary is monitoring the Facebook questions, I believe.
Yes. So before we go further, Ms. Cleary, are there comments on Facebook?
There's one question, so.
Okay. So before we go out of order here, I just want to sort of ask for a motion to go to the community feedback first before the school committee has a chance to deliberate. Is there a motion? Does that affect on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Cleary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. St. Ange. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Hi, Craig McClellan, the motion unanimously passes. So Mrs. Cleary, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No problem. There's actually a few now. The first, I apologize so much if I, if I butcher anyone's name here. Leontina Markatouli. What about parents who have to drop off both middle school and high school students in the morning? How would that work?
Yeah, you'd, you'd essentially drop off the, because we're using the both, so you'd drop off at the, the gymnasium. And then you'd probably come back, or I guess you could just queue and wait. What, what are your thoughts on that, Principal Scott and Principal Mills?
You're going to have the bus kids in the high school coming in anyway. So I think it's fine if you drop them off together on the, the back loop and then the kids go right to class. That's how I would treat the high school kids.
Yeah, I don't think that, we don't see that as a major concern. I think that, you know, you, you could certainly wait and come back, but it sounds like we're going to be able to accommodate the high school kids. And of course, the middle school kids have the early drop off anyway. Is that your understanding, Principal Mills?
Yeah, depending on the time, I mean, the way we envision it is from, you know, seven forty-five-ish all the way till about eight oh five. Kids coming in can go up to the cafeteria and eat breakfast. The cafeteria supplies a free breakfast for anybody. After eight oh five, if you, between eight oh five and eight fifteen, students that come in are going to stay in the, the lower lobby or the outdoor courtyard and wait until just a minute or so before class begins. And at that time, they'll be released to go to class. So to answer that parent's question as far as the middle school, yeah, her middle schooler would come in and depending on the time, either go up for breakfast or stay with their friends in the lower lobby courtyard area.
Yeah, we realize there's going to be some blending. We, we kept the stagger because we, you know, the buses, although they are going to have a lot of kids on them, don't seem to be having as many as we typically do. So we're, we're really trying to implore folks that have just high school students who are dropping off to come close to eight thirty. I think that will really do it, quite honestly, now that we've been able to open up the buses to our, you know, to most people. Or anybody wants it, really.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Caroline Stockbridge Norjo. Thank you to the administration, teachers and staff for all the work that went into this plan. I'm looking forward to having both my middle school and high school students attend five days per week.
Very nice. We are too.
Jamie Cups. First, I can't voice enough how much I appreciate the effort that has been put forth by everyone at Coas at public schools for the past year. You are all rock stars. If classroom desks are three feet apart, does that mean that if one child in that classroom tests positive, all others within that classroom would be considered a close contact? If so, with no synchronous learning option, how will the students in quarantine for potentially five to seven days access their daily classes? This would be especially concerning in the high school, given the number of mixed level courses.
Yeah, well, as I said, it, it's not going to be an expectation that we're able to provide synchronous learning. You know, that, that we're, we really want the kid, the teacher focusing on the kids in front of them. It, it would basically be like a chicken pox plan, if, if you will. I mean, it really is going to be, you know, a number of days you're out. There are some staff who I believe might, might actually provide some synchronous learning opportunities, but it will not be an expectation. And yeah, your question about will there be more students quarantining? We, again, we were under six feet anyway. So, but logic shows that if we're closer together, that it could be some more students, absolutely. You know, there's a potential, and I, I don't know this for certain, but there's potential that as the CDC and, you know, Dr. Farcy himself mentions that they're really recognizing three feet now, that they could change their quarantining guidance, which would allow, you know, anything greater than three feet to, to not be a quarantine. But as of right now, that would mean that we would quarantine potentially some more students. It could be, it could be all class, but it, it might not be the entire class.
Probably unlikely at the high school that it's the entire class.
Yeah.
You know, I think, you know, if, if fifty of your classes are going to be stuffed, the other hundred are, are not. So, you know, for the teachers that can space people out more than three feet, we're going to try to do that. For those classes of thirty that are trying to get in the same space, you know, it's going to be closer to eight or ten people, depending on what the configuration of the room is. But it might not be every class. It might not be eight times five. It might be eight in one class, six in another class or something like that. And then we're just going to have to play it as it comes and, and work with the teachers to try to figure out what's best for the students. And, you know, it's been the, the year of like, what's happening right now. So that's the way we're just going to have to treat it.
Yeah, I remember the way we're handling close contacts, too, we have been since this guidance came out is that it's after five days, so the, the fifth, on the fifth day of your last contact with someone who was positive, if you're identified as a close contact, you can test. And that if you do have a negative test that comes back, you can return on day eight. So that, that's, that's sort of the minimum that we're allowed to, to kind of play with there. You know, we, we've gotten through those scenarios and we'll continue to do that. And I know that teachers will certainly be in tune with, you know, those students who are out. But I, I do want to make it clear that we're, we're really trying to focus on providing the in-person experience. That the congruent learning is a, is a much different animal and it's, it's not what we're, we're trying to do here.
We're certainly going to work with the kids in quarantine.
Absolutely.
You know, what I, what I think we're not doing is accommodating the kid who's in Florida. I've been out for a couple of weeks. I want to zoom in. That's, that's, those days are gone. But, you know, if you're in a COVID situation, we're going to try to make as many.
Yeah, I think, I think folks will realize that we're, that we'll be keeping kids in tune with what's happening. I just don't want everyone thinking that we're going to do a synchronous model because it really flies in the face of teaching the kids in person, which is what we're trying to focus on.
Principal Mills, did you have something else to add? I feel like you were going to say something.
Yeah, I think I'm going to cut him off. Sorry.
Yeah, I think it is, back to the social distancing in the classroom. It is worth remembering that the three feet between seat edge is a minimum. So if in a particular classroom, if there just isn't a maximum number of kids, those seats could be more spaced apart. And then regardless of how many seats are in there, we'll keep the number of seats for the largest section. But your student could be in a room in which, you know, half, only half of the seats are even being occupied. So to Principal Scott's point, in calculating close contacts, there'll be a lot of variation between classes and it, and, you know, the definition is within six feet for fifteen consecutive minutes. So it, it's, I, I don't think I would assume that it would be a whole class either. So there'll be some variation.
Thank you. Sarah Dickerman McSweeney. Thank you, team. A very comprehensive set of plans for full in-person learning. It's clear that a lot of planning and review work has taken place to ensure the middle high will be just as successful as the elementary schools. Well done and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, how do you want to handle questions and comments that are not related to agenda items? That I guess probably should have been made during public comment.
Oh, I, I think that everyone knows they should be asking or raising points that aren't related to agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. That said, this particular meeting was sort of messed up in the beginning. So why don't we, you know, you know, to an extent, I, you know, allow people to be heard. I just don't want people to be frustrated. It's, it's been frustrating, I think, for people trying to watch. So.
Can I, can I make a motion that we continue committee deliberation on this point and revisit these later in the agenda, perhaps?
I think that's appropriate. Yeah.
So some good news.
At the conclusion of the, of the, the returns to the buildings comments.
I would, I would suggest, I mean, is it possible to put it under topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair?
Sure.
Oh, Mrs. Mar?
You can, we can just have a motion to move public comments to another portion of the agenda, whether you want it after the superintendent's report or the finance report before school committee deliberations.
Sure. Let's, let's, let's do that. So I think an appropriate time to do it would be between the finance and, and the school committee section. So is there a motion that affect on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Cleary, seconded. If anyone, second?
Second.
By Mr. Kearney, all in favor. And just a reminder, and I vote would move public comment to after the finance section before the school committee section. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Hi, Craig McClellan, motion unanimously passes. That's what we'll do, Mrs. Cleary. Uh, Mrs. Mar, thank you for such suggestion. So is it, does that conclude the comments related to the returning the middle and high school students to the buildings?
It does.
Okay, so we'll, well, that, that, that brings us to, to you. Dr. Sullivan, something, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, I was just going to once again apologize to the families out there for the technology snafu. One good thing is that we're not, I'm not asking for a final vote. We're not asking for a final vote today. So when we come back on the twenty-fourth to present where we, you know, where, where we finally land, there, there, there could be opportunity at that point, Chair McClellan, for, for families to ask questions if they feel that they weren't able to access Facebook because of this unfortunate technology issue.
Sure. I think we really deliver all of this. So, yes, there's been multiple forms for people to do that. So that's correct. So, so moving to deliberations, Mrs. Cleary, do you have any thoughts on the matter?
A couple, one, I just was wondering, Dr. Sullivan, if you were considering putting your presentation or a link to it in the navigator this week?
Absolutely, I will. Yep.
Yeah, because that'll be easy for me to reference in the notes and just tell people to look for that. And then anyone who wasn't able to make the transition to the live stream, maybe we'll be able to review it in there.
Yeah, what I might actually do is because of the unique circumstances with the technology issues, I'm going to actually just send it out after this meeting.
Oh, good idea. Yeah.
But I will, I will definitely link it in the navigator.
Okay, thank you. So the one thing, so thank you all so much. I, I mean, you know, every time we think we reach some sort of finish line, there's like another finish line or six after it. So I really, I know this has been the most difficult year and I'm so grateful for all of you. I mean, not only do you do such a fabulous job doing your jobs, but you're doing all these other jobs and for kind, thorough. I really appreciate it. I just would like to comment that it seemed to me in the graph of, you, you, there was a graph in the beginning of your presentation that compared six feet of distance to three feet of distance. And it sort of showed that there wasn't a great difference in transmission rate. Oh, you're going to go back to it. What I noticed about that, yeah, this one, is that it, it does seem to correlate pretty well with community transmission. is that it, it does seem to correlate pretty well with community transmission rates. And so to me, this seems like a great opportunity to just, to your point that you've raised a few times, Dr. Sullivan, I just want to emphasize that when we prioritize our children's learning as we want to do here, it just becomes more important that we, as a community, do our part to make sure that we can keep transmission rates and community spread down. So I feel like each time, you know, the, the light is there at the end of the tunnel seemingly, and I just really feel like also with like a vacate, you know, a break coming up, I just really, really, really am begging members of our community to consider that if we want to prioritize our children's learning just this year, we just really need to consider that when we're making plans about what we're doing in our free time. And I also feel like with increased vaccination for adults, that might also feel like it creates more opportunity for a lot more freedom and moving around and interaction. But I just want to remind people that very few of our children will be vaccinated as we start to experience that freedom. And so as we move about more freely, if we're bringing our children, it's sort of a very precarious situation. And so I just want to take this opportunity as we are congratulating you on a job very well done. And I just want to take the opportunity to remind members of the community who are watching that the success of all of this is directly dependent on all of our behavior. So, thank you.
And Ashley, CDC also backs what you've said, that they really look at, you know, it's, it's not only in school transmission, but it's community transmission. And their rules of engagement, so to speak, change if your, your rates are really high. So I, it's, it's a very thoughtful thing to say, and you know, I, I think I just want to reiterate that, very important.
So I think that's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Caleri. Mr. Kearney, do you have any comments this time? Kearney, can you hear us? Do you have any comments? It's your turn. We'll come back to Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar.
Thank you. I have a, a comment and then two questions. This is the fourth plan, Dr. Sullivan, that you presented to us, that for students to return to school in phases, and each plan has followed a very methodical, process-driven, data-driven process in, in your mind, the evolving collaborative. And each one has been successful. And we've returned kids to school on a hybrid model successfully. We return kids to school on Wednesdays in an alternating scenario very successfully. We've returned kids to elementary K through five successfully. And I have every confidence that we will return kids to our middle school and our high school successfully. And that couldn't be done without your leadership and your collaboration with your team. It's quite evident to, to me and, and hopefully to everyone listening and watching and, and reading your report, that you approach this in a very team-driven manner. And, and you listen to people's opinions, and you make changes where, where someone else might have a good idea. And I think that's why it's been successful. So I, I, I appreciate everything you and your team have put into it. So I have two, two questions. Will we know next Wednesday for phase two for the high school, which option you'll be leaning towards?
I think so. Principal Scott, do you have, you know, I, I think we will. I think we'll have enough information.
I mean, I know which one I'm leaning towards. It's, it's the two lunches and not the snack.
Okay.
Correct. By far. So if I can make that work.
We, we almost took that, that snack option out. That's how close we are. So I, I think so. I think we'll be ready at that point.
Okay, thank you. And then Principal Scott, for, for kids in the high school who are engaged in after-school athletics or activities in the phase one version where, where they go home and then they zoom, if, and, and I guess also in, in the phase two, if they're not able to get back and forth for whatever reason, are, are you thinking of accommodations so that, because a lot of kids end up staying on campus in a nor, in a normal environment. They end up staying on campus if they have twenty or thirty minutes until their activity starts. To get home and back might be a bit of a challenge.
Yeah, that's one thing we're going to have to just think through. You know, again, we're talking about two weeks, and we're only talking about football and cheer in terms of athletics. The clubs, I'm very confident we can manage in, in a little bit of a different way. So I'm not worried about them for the two-week period, but, you know, we'll have to take a look at the, what's, you know, the, the group of kids as a whole. How many kids are really driving? What I don't want is everybody crowded in the cafeteria trying to eat because that defeats what we're trying to do. But we might have certain pockets of kids where, you know, the freshmen and sophomores who aren't driving, we have a place with them, but I would want to work with the teachers to try to figure out, you know, from a supervisory standpoint, we're not going to have everybody in the learning common zooming into class. It would be chaos. But they might be able to zoom from a teacher's room or something like that. But, you know, again, I don't want to, I don't want to say that that's a definitive plan. It's just something that I'm going to have to work with coach and work with Coach Retundy and, and the teachers on.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you for your kind comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mr. Kearney has left us. So we will move on to Mrs. St. Ange.
Thank you. My question I don't think was brought up tonight in transportation, but it was brought up in the, the last meeting about limited parking for student drivers. Is that an issue any longer or has it been solved?
That is a not COVID issue. That is a, Cohasset has a lot of drivers issue. So initially, it was an issue coming into the school year. And, you know, the volume of, of drivers exceeds the number of spots we have. So what we were planning to do, if we weren't in a pandemic, is assign spots to students, right? In the past, it's been a little bit looser, so they parked in, basically illegally. They've blocked people in, they've parked in handicap slots. We can't have that. So what we're going to do for parking is we have a hundred and fifteen spots in the student lot. Everybody who's registered their car, every senior who's registered their car is going to get an assigned spot. And they'll be, we'll be rolling those out over the next couple of weeks. Right now, there are seventy seniors that are registered. I suspect that there are many seniors who just didn't bother registering. So if they don't register their car, like we asked, so that we can find the license plate and call you up and say you, you're blocking so-and-so in, then they're not going to get a spot. They're going to have to park at Milliken. We're going to give them time to do that. And then we're going to take the existing pool of juniors who've been driving all year and allocate those spots that are left over. The remaining kids will have to park. There's about fifty spots at Milliken. So between a hundred and fifteen in the lot and the fifty or so at Milliken, that should get us through for a while. And then the, the new drivers are just going to have to sit tight till the seniors are gone, and then it should be fine.
All right, great. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. I have no comments other than saying, reiterating the thanks. So it's a very well thought out plan, as it always has been. As Mrs. Mar noted, every plan that you've delivered to us so far, that has been approved, approved, has been implemented with success and precision. And I expect this to be no different. Saying that, or having said that, excuse me, I would ask for a motion to preliminarily approve the district's plan to return all middle school and high school students on a five-day basis to their respective buildings as outlined in the plan, subject to final approval on March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, at a special school committee meeting. Is there a motion to that effect on the floor?
So moved.
Motion is made by Mrs. Mar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Caleri. All in favor, Mrs. Caleri?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney is still not present. Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. Motion passes on a vote of four to five, Dr. Sullivan. So we will hold that special meeting on the twenty-fourth for final approval.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your thoughtful questions, and thank you to, most importantly, to Principal Scott and Principal Mills. Great job, gentlemen. It was a tough, long day. So thank you for being here, and I'll let you guys go. Of course. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much, Principal Scott Mills. Moving on, Dr. Sullivan, is your mid-cycle goals review?
Yes.
Summarize that.
I sure will. So I know that the committee has had a chance to take a look at this. And typically, and I do appreciate the committee's indulgence in having the mid-cycle well beyond the mid-cycle. But, you know, also allowing me to, to present where, where I am with the goals. Mid-cycle typically, it, it's just about the goals, but I've also added a chart here that talks, oh, that depicts how I have moved through my, through the rubric and through the, the expectation set by me, for me in that rubric. And this is very closely tied with Dr. Scollins's goals. So it's nice to have been able to work together collaboratively on this. The first goal, if you remember, and I'll just go very briefly through these, but I'm very willing to stop or to take questions at any point, Chair McClellan, as I go through. But the first goal is basically to work on the reentry roadmap, which of course has become much more than just a reentry roadmap. As both Mrs. Mar and Chair McClellan have mentioned, the, we've had to do several reiterations of what reentry actually means. Reentry in the beginning of the school year, of course, our, our move when we've had to, we had to plan for hybrid in-person and remote. What we were going to do for the Wednesdays, when we added those in early December, and then the full entry into our elementary and our pending in-person reentry with our middle and high school. And this particular goal, I feel that I have potentially hit all of my benchmarks because of the intensive work that it, it dictated really at the front of the year. Collaboratively creating the roadmap, making adjustments along the way, presenting the roadmap to the community in August. I provided forums at every level. When I say I, really, my team did. I, I can't take credit for doing all of it, but, you know, that was my goal, so I'm just saying aye. Collaboratively discussed and presented to all staff for input. You know, I'll, I'll continue to, to do that as we move into the next phase of reentry with the middle and high school as well. Some of these discussions have to happen deeply at the building level, and they really do. They're operationally bounded in what's happening in the buildings. So really, working with my principals to make sure the information gets filtered through them to, to the teams are important as well. Creating protocols, collaborating with all stakeholders, the HVAC analysis. Again, the presentations, not just to the school committee, but to the advisory committee regarding the, the PACs, and it was a joint advisory capital committee, I believe. Creating the short and long-term plan for HVACs, procuring all personal protective equipment, working very closely with Glenn Pratt, Emergency Management. Of course, our Director of Finance and Operations had a great deal to do with this as well. Thank you, Sue. Working with town and school stakeholders, establishing the tents, which are coming back in a more grand way than before, I should say, hopefully. Trainings around PPE, all the trainings we had to do with our, for our bus drivers, our custodians, our service workers, all of our special educators, our teachers, us, every, every facet of staff that needed to be trained in those protocols. Not to mention the kids. You know, it, it took a lot of training and, and working to get it right. And very thankful to be surrounded by such professional educators and staff that took it seriously. And, and we've seen the dividends of that as we, as we move on. Implement the training, I talked about that. Then we had our professional development, which I have to give a lot of thanks to Dr. Scollins Mrs. Sawanka and the building principals, but, and Elisa Gettens Carl, great work. We gave training for our staff on safety protocols, on trauma. We knew the students would be experiencing trauma. That's going to come in handy when our students come back full. It's a different paradigm for, for them. Race and trauma, remember, we have all the racial unrest happening. And we had to have our teachers ready to talk to students about that and to deal with the feelings that came from seeing all of that. Remote learning, who knew, who knew about the concept, you know, and never mind having to implement it fully with our, with our students, social, emotional learning considerations, treating asynchronously, synchronously, and in a congruent manner, where you're teaching the kids in front of you and the kids at home. Experts included Ed Tech teacher Monica Bellson, Colleen Swarnham, the Dr. Plummer, Dr. Barbudo, Dr. Golden, our, our district physician, Pam Fahy, and Mary Goodwin, our public health agents. Mary Goodwin being our town nurse, and Lauren Dargan, who is an expert on child and child, children development. Advocated to hire a new position of Director of Technology and Digital Learning to help with the increasing demands for remote learning within their teaching. And then the evidence that we've gathered about the efficacy of the first six weeks of school, it seems like ten years ago, but if you remember, on October twenty-eighth, we all met to talk about how was our plan going? And out of that meeting came some good ideas. And we, and also, you know, a, a pretty good nod to the fact that things were going all right. And we were able to gather that information and move forward in a meaningful way. And then just continual presentations throughout the year about all the levels of reentry that I talked about. Working with my principal's advisory council, who've really been helpful. They were even helpful this last time, right after school committee meeting, to, to make me see some things that maybe I hadn't focused on. In particular, the, the need for the buses that we were working on, but my, our efforts became a little more feverish to try to provide them for, for the students after that meeting. And then surveys, emails, forums, superintendent copies, we've really tried to be communicative with all stakeholders. And again, it's, this year has been about adjustments, and I feel that I've made all my benchmarks on that. Chair McClellan, should I just go and go through all four goals? Five goals?
Keep, keep trucking.
Okay, so the next one was the three-year strategic plan. And we are soldiering through a strategic plan. Remember, we, we have to, we're creating a new plan while we're doing all of this, and it needs to be meaningful work. So we're lucky because we have very good facilitators who are educators and leaders, and they're mindful of what we're going through, and we don't want to just do this for compliance. That's not what we're trying to do. We want this to be meaningful and guided by data and guided by the desires of all stakeholders to improve our, our district. So we're taking the time necessary to do that. And if that requires slowing down, which it has recently, we're going to do that. We're not going to present a plan that's compliant and doesn't represent the desires and the needs of our staff, of our staff, and of our families and students. So we've worked with the consultant. We've created a checklist, which I'll show you below here. We've conducted forums with parents, the CPAC, the PSO, we've done all of these forums, I believe all of them. And you can see that we formulated the, the planning committee. We have a meeting coming up with them. We're going to do a lot of work, I believe. Dr. Scollins and May, and I get to give Dr. Scollins a lot of kudos for this as well, as she's really taken on the lead in, in, in a lot of this work. And here, here, I know, I'm not going to go over this, but you've had a chance to look at it. This is our, sort of our checklist and calendar for our strategic planning, and we're still in line to make sure we have this by the end of the year, if, if at latest, early summer, to lead us into the next three years. Student learning goal, goal number three, this is about closing learning gaps. And this is included work regarding our Student Opportunity Act, which Dr. Scollins has presented to, to everyone by now, including that in our newsletters and including the navigator. Dr. Scollins, I'll let you talk a bit about this part of the goal, because I think that your work really deserves recognition in this. So can you just update quickly about some of the work you do regarding learning gaps in your role?
Absolutely. And I will go back to the Student Opportunity Act. Just really quickly, we did not, we were not supposed to receive any funding, but we got an email last week. We did not, we were not supposed to receive any funding, but we got an email last week where we will be granted a nominal amount. But it's about $5,000, but $5,000 is $5,000. So we'll be able to use that to support, to support the work that we're going to do in the grant. So that was a really nice surprise because we didn't expect that. So I'm working with Mrs. Sawanka and looking at how to best use that money to support that program. But when it comes to looking at those learning gaps and working with the staff, I know Dr. Sullivan talked about the fact that on Friday, we have Professional Development Day and teachers are looking at, you know, what, what has happened so far and where they're at with teaching the standards? And which ones have they partially met or ones that they still know that they need to complete? We're giving them time to work with at the elementary level, the math and reading specialists to really create the plan that's going to move them forward. And they're also at the middle and high school, they are working in teams and department to look at also what, you know, where are we at? And what has been the, what has been the progress of our students? And in addition to that, we also are looking at, you know, what are the things that we're using as tools for tracking? Not necessarily tracking, but ensuring that our kids are getting what they need. So we have Lexia and Dreambox at the elementary level, that's K through five, and Lexia is a reading program and Dreambox is math. They're both adaptive programs, which I spoke to about in other meetings, but they, they respond to the student. And so it will move the student at the pace that they're able to move. In addition, it also has some reports that allow us to see what students are doing, where their needs are. And if, looking at that data, we say trends and patterns. All, you know, in, in a bigger lot, not just on the student, but that we have, you know, a grade level that we're seeing some things. That's going to give us data to help us as we look at what we're going to do this year and then into next year. The middle and high school and in math and ELA have IXL, which again is a very similar program. And that allows us to run some reports and see how students are doing. So those are just a few of the things I'm looking really quickly to see what you have there, but that was just a quick, I think. Is that, is that good, Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, one of the things that we haven't done yet is to do a long-term plan, which we're working on. You know, that's something that is to come. We have all kinds of short-term plans that are somewhat reactive to what our students are showing us.
Right.
Being done in our child study meetings. And I know that you'll talk more about this, but maybe the, the note about our, well, Jumpstart or it might be a little bigger than a Jumpstart program.
Yeah, it's going to be much larger. One of the things that, as you know, we had the grant that we received for summer vacation and school vacation. We had the Jumpstart program, which was a two-week program for elementary students before school started. We, we tried to get the program up and running for vacations, but there wasn't really the desire. And we were also having a difficult time finding teachers to be in the program. So I asked Jesse if there was a way we could take the funding, because we still have a lot of money left, because we only used a small portion. Could we combine both the summer vacation and the school vacation funding and create a summer program for this summer? And they said yes, which I was thrilled about. So I'm working with Mr. Wonga to create a summer program that will run the same time as the extended school year program. That allows us to share resources such as custodians and nurses. And that will be a program that will run, that will be for students going into first grade and all the way through students going into 11th grade. They will look different at different levels because the needs of the students are different. But that program will run in early July to early August. And there'll be a variety of ways parents could access it. And I've also worked with Ted Carroll, the Director of the Recreation Department. So families who are going to be part of the summer program could just then walk over. They would actually be escorted over to the Rec Department program. So you don't have to pick one or the other, I think, you know, because I don't want parents to think they have to do that. So I think that that's going to show a really nice way for kids to, you know, shore up those gaps in our reading, math, and the social emotional piece, which is really, really big too.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Scollins. And of course, our long-term plan and more on that program is to come for sure. And that's really, you know, we're going to continue to do everything we're doing, but that, that's the big piece that I think needs to happen with that goal. The next goal is about building, it's carryover from last year, building a collaborative district and leadership team. I just want to remind everyone that as of last year, we're a new team. We, we have a new high school principal, a new high school assistant principal, that both started in their roles last year. A new middle, the new position of middle school principal, a new middle school assistant principal. A new, a brand-new director of student services this year, a brand-new director of finance and operations this year. A brand-new position of digital learning and technology. And I'm new and Dr. Scollins is new in the role. So it was, if you think it's tricky to do all this with a team that's tried and true and knew each other really well. Try doing it with a group that hasn't been together very well, very long, I should say. And if not for having such a fantastic team and the fact that we meet all the time and we've grown very quickly together. We could have fallen very short. So I feel very proud of the work that, oh, I feel very proud to be part of that team, first off. That's the biggest thing. And then secondly, just the work that we've done together to, to help, you know, all stakeholders in the district. I'm very proud of because we're so new at our roles and we're going to get better, just as any team does, that is together for longer. So that's to be expected. But we've done all that and part of it is also getting to know and getting all these new leaders to work with the town. And I think we've tried to do that thoroughly. We meet with them often and I think we have very strong relationships with our police. Very respectful, mutual relationships with police and fire and with the town manager. You know, I should mention the town manager, you know, very much helped in accessing the vaccinations for our teachers at the fairgrounds. And we've done some, some really good work with, with them to move the town along. And I feel very proud of that collaboration. I work with our health agents that I mentioned has been really thankful, really, really appreciative and thankful for them, for them. And then our, all of the updated safety presentations, we continue to work with the Norfolk County District Attorney and DCF to provide mandated reporter training and everything that goes with that. You know, academic curriculum development, again, hats off to Dr. Scollins, but the work on bridges and our math program and collaborative efforts to create that. The professional development team that meets often and has really driven our offerings throughout the pandemic, including the first 12 days. Constant communication with stakeholders, I've tried to provide that, but we're doing it at every level. And hopefully people see that and feel it's effective. Now, keep in mind, we were going to be having new start times this year. We did. So we're also implementing new start times within a pandemic. And that's been interesting because in any other year, that would be a focus is the new start times and how people are adjusting to those. So that's been important, really working and the committee's been helpful with this, to prioritize having our own buses for our Boston students. You know, and instead of having to share, there's been necessity to do that. But I can see a really, and I know that Mrs. Gettens-Carl feels this too, a real importance in having their own buses. And then continuing to work with our child study teams. And we're always talking about cultural competency. We had great meetings today as a leadership team to come up with a working definition of equity. And what equity looks like in our classrooms, in our, in our school community, that we're very excited to share and work with other stakeholders. I know that Ashley and our, our teams are working together to formulate some, some offerings around Juneteenth and Pride Month, Pride Week, I should say. I'm losing my voice. I don't know why, but I guess I've been talking for like three hours. But that, that's going on and we're very proud of that and the, the passion of the town to continue with that. And then we've created goals around cultural competency. I'm not going to read them, but you can see them here for our leadership team that are complete with key actions and benchmarks. And we created goals around safety too. So those are, every single leadership member has these two goals. So I'm personally in meeting with them at least monthly to check on the status of how they're doing on these, these goals. And then I guess the, the next goal and the last goal. Did I miss it here? Is that the last goal? No, last goal is this one. It is working with our new Director of Technology and Digital Learning Director to create the position. And I did send a presentation that she recently gave to Capital, which shows a lot of the fruits of, of her work. And again, very collaborative in getting stakeholder voice and what we hope to do moving forward with technology. She's reinvigorated the digital learning team. They're a very cohesive and goal-oriented team and that's going to continue to move. And a lot of systems being created with our Director of Technology and Digital Learning. And also working with our existing technology team with Ron Madar and Dan Kelly and all, Jeff and all their Kyle and Tajah and all their expertise that they bring and combining that with Lisa Radden's expertise and experience as well. So pretty much met all of those, except we do have to make sure that we include our strategic technology considerations into our strategic plan. And I won't go over any of these, but you, they're there for you. And this is just all of the, the indicators and the elements under the indicators. It just shows some evidence. I do actually have physical evidence and binders that are available anytime that any committee member wants to review it that are available here in the, in central office. So I'll stop share at this point and just open it up. Chair McClellan, if you had any comments from the committee or any considerations for me and my team as we move forward? And thank you again for your patience with the mid-cycle being well off mid-cycle. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Sullivan, Mrs. Caleri.
I would just like to say that, well, I'm impressed by many things, but one thing I'm very impressed by is that you got through this very lengthy document. You did a great job with that. I was a little nervous, I'm not going to lie. I, I just, I don't think there are words to express how grateful I am that you have taken on the role of superintendent in this district with such gusto and put together such a fabulous leadership team and taken such a collaborative approach to your work here. And I think it's really evident that through, through this very lengthy document, that you are, not only are you doing what a superintendent is charged with doing, you're doing all of that as you're creating five roadmaps to reentry and dealing with all of the challenges that COVID has presented to all of us. I mean, I'm a regular person and it has presented me with challenges. You have to oversee an entire school district. I just, I really, I really appreciate you. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your kind kindness.
Thank you, Mrs. Caleri. Mr. Kearney, you there?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm having a lot of technical difficulties tonight, but you know, I just want to echo what Ashley was saying and how you guys have been fantastic, Dr. Sullivan and your team. And just you guys have exceeded expectations and we just continue to show good leadership in the town. And I got to tell you, as a parent of a middle school and a high school student, high school students, I am so pleased to get these children back into five days a week. Because I think it's just such a huge necessity that they, for their social and emotional learning. And again, the staff has been incredible. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words and your words about the staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Marr.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, for the mid-cycle evaluation. And Dr. Scollins, thanks for articulating how the summer programming was going to get funded, because that was actually a question I had from the, the reentry that I neglected to answer. So I think, I think that's a really terrific program and a good way to use that money and much needed. And I'm very interested in further work in the learning gaps. And I'll bring up another comment about that when we go to school committee comments and communications. But I think it's really important that we don't shy away from anything that, any data that might show us that we have, we have gaps. It wouldn't be normal if we didn't have gaps. And I think the fact that we have a reading specialist in the middle school for next year and another special education teacher in the middle school for next year kind of addresses that. But it would be, you know, terrific to have, to know what the data is to support that. A little segue, Dr. Sullivan, you mentioned Ms. Radden's presentation to Capital. I saw an agenda for Monday night. They have school technology, question mark, as a follow-up for Monday, the 22nd. Just, I don't know if you saw that or were aware of that.
I did, and there was some questions that we're going to work on answering. I think the question mark is, I, we're going to answer the questions. And if, if they feel that we've sufficiently answered them, like what, we may not need to come. But if there's some follow-up needed, then potentially we would.
So, so, all right, so you were aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And so then, and I'd also just like to, you know, share with my fellow committee members that Dr. Sullivan mentioned, he has some binders with evidence. And as we look at writing his final evaluation for which each of us will do our own write-up. It's, it's really insightful to go through the binders to really see the level of detail that answers. You know, which develops some of the comments he made on his, on his mid-cycle. And for us to be thoughtful about our own evaluations. And then the chair will, you know, summarize them into a single evaluation from, from the committee. But the binders and evidence are really good resources for us as members to help us craft our, our own evaluations of Dr. Sullivan. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Marr. Mrs. St. Orange.
Thank you for everything. I, I guess I don't really have anything new to say, except I'm just blown away and impressed. And I brag about you guys all the time. And I think just the point you made about being a member of a new team and how well you've kind of gelled and worked together. I feel like it's almost like what you hear about when people go to war together, like they didn't know each other. And then, not that this is war, but I feel like it's the most comparable thing that we can think about is just diving in as a team. And, and you've really just taken this year by the horns and, and are leading us to victory, I guess you would say. But I, I'm just so impressed by what you've done. And I do look forward to looking at the binders because I know how much time it takes to gather that evidence. And I'm sure you have to gather more than I do, but it's, you know, it will be good to have all of that evidence to look at. And thank you for preparing such a thoughtful document halfway through. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Dr. Sullivan, I think all my colleagues have said it already. So you know that I, I feel very strongly that you and Dr. Scollins are doing an amazing job. So, and I think that your goals, I think emphasize the importance you place on the right things. And, and of course, above all things for you and Dr. Scollins has been and always will be the student. So thank you so much for all you do and we'll be looking forward to those final evals.
Not going to jinx myself, but it would be nice to be in a, kind of a normalized plane where we can go at a pace that is, is appropriate. It's been, it's been hard. The pacing for all of this has not been the way we would, would have wanted to do. But unfortunately, you know, there's been some major decisions we've had to make. So, yeah, I am looking forward to getting back to what's always most important when you start off any job. And it's, we're trying to continue it, but it's been more challenging for a lot of, a lot of reasons, but it's building relationships. And that, because that always is what determines long-term success. And, you know, we're, we're mindful that the pace has been a little accelerated in that. Looking forward to moving back and doing that again. Looking forward to moving back and doing that again.
Okay. Well, uh, speaking of, uh, moving on, uh, does that complete the superintendent's report for tonight?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you. While we're all still standing here, um, Mrs. Owen, could you bring us into the finance report, please, with the monthly update?
Certainly. Pat, do you want to share? Do you, or do you want me to share it?
Uh, I think I can share it here. Let me see if I can find it. Yeah, you're gonna do the update. Okay. Yep.
So I have a couple of things. One is the monthly update and then I have two other very quick things. Again, where this is, this is a copy of the school summary budget, um, by cost centers and you can see over the course of the years, um, where we've landed and what it looks like from year to year. The, um, special education area is, is one that shows that we're, we're sixty-six point six, seven percent through the year, but in the special education, you can see that we're over, um, and the tuitions. One of the reasons is, um, I have asked that the special department to go through all their encumbrances and all the tuitions and make sure they're accurate because they do change. They are fluid. I believe they probably are, but it's just a double check. The other piece is we had two unanticipated settlements, um, that, uh, Mrs. Solaka had to, um, work through litigation with. So that was, you know, an add of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that it was unanticipated. The hope is either the end of year funds will absorb that or there's always the, the chance of going to the stabilization fund if we need to. We're not at that point right now because we don't really know what the, the bottom line is going to look like. And it's the same thing with the, the specialty transportation. It is basically the same. So it's an area that we're watching. The next slide is just, you know, um, one more. Sorry. There you go. No, one more. Sorry. Fair area. School budget summary. Nope. One more. It's all the same piece, I think. There we go. So this is summary budget to actual expenditures. So again, it shows you the budget, what we expended, what the balance is, the percent that we've expended, um, what's encumbered and what isn't encumbered. So if you look at the percentages, you can see, you know, some areas are less than the sixty-six percent. Some are, are more, um, but overall we're still, we're still okay bottom line. And the next slide is the actual expenditures. One more, I believe. Yes. Okay.
One back up or what do you want?
No, no, I don't think, I don't, it's not there. I don't know what happened. It's the second time it's not there. This, this is the summary of the revolving and the grants. So this gives you an idea of what, um, our funding, the funding codes are, what our opening balance is, what our receipts have been, what we've expended to date, what we've encumbered. The good news is in yellow, I highlighted, um, we got two new, we had two new grants come through or funding. The E S S E R two grant, um, we just applied for. It's a hundred and eighty-three, nine, two, seven. That's certainly going to help us with all the additional PPE and tents and furniture and the C I C testing. So hopefully that's gonna, um, be plentiful to cover that. And this, we, we received, um, COVID prevention fund. It's not really, it's not really a grant. That's why it doesn't have a, a fun code. It's forty-four thousand, seven, twenty-five. We've already received the first half of the payment. The second half of the payment will be probably in May or June. So that's some addition as well. And then the others that are highlighted in yellow, the school improvement, the one forty, the two forty, the two six two and the three seventeen. That, those are just showing that we had increases. They, they did amendments, um, and the state sent us, they increased our allocations, some not by much, some by like a hundred and twenty-four. The Metco was increased by like nineteen thousand. I think early childhood, the two six two was increased by like twenty-six dollars. But it just, those are, those have increased, which is why I highlighted them for you. So you can see, um, where we're headed. We have two other smaller grants coming through, um, in special education. I want to say they're probably in the nine or ten thousand dollar range that, um, will show up on our next report. The next slide is the revolving account. This again shows us, um, our balances, um, what we carried over, what our revenue has been, what our expenditures are. One area that was, I was looking at was the, let me go up a little bit, Pat. Let's see. The, so the, um, after-school program is, here it says minus fifty-one hundred. I talked to the town, the town accountant, um, yesterday and it was a matter of he had not made the deposit, so the transfers. So that account right now is plus six thousand dollars. So we're not, we're not in an area of deficit in that account. The other one that, that's, I, I mean, a hot ticket item, and I don't want to get too detailed into is the, the transportation revolving and the kindergarten. The kindergarten, we have, we have favorite eighty-five thousand dollars left and we probably have about a hundred twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars in expenditures to come. So that account may end up in deficit. It's looking like it'll be about twenty-one thousand dollars in deficit if we make all the collections throughout the year. And that's all I'm going to talk about on that right now. The next slide is just a balance on capital. Haven't spent much more. I haven't changed much more. The, the doors have not been done yet. Greg, Dearhill, um, we're still waiting, um, for the contractor to get their parts and, and get ready to go, but it is encumbered and hopefully we'll get done in the next month or so. And I think that's it. I don't know if there's something after this.
That's it.
That's it. So I don't know if there's questions. I mean, I have, I know, um, I had some questions. One was on, um, the utilities, you know, one of the questions was, you know, they didn't seem to match up from year to year. I checked with accounting, um, the February electric and I think it's electric and I don't, it's electric and something else. Didn't, didn't get paid until the beginning of March, which is why it's not showing up. It will show up in the next report. The, um, cleaning and contract supplies, materials, um, that account is, more than the sixty-seven percent expended. It's probably more like ninety percent. But we, we also have these new grants coming through that will help pick up with the PPE and the supplies, uh, sanitation stuff. And there was one more, I think, um, transportation. So originally I thought, um, the transportation account was, um, at a higher percent expended. The, the Metco transportation has not yet been, um, allocated to a tat. So it will offset some of the transportation, um, costs of hitting the regular budget. It just hasn't been transferred over yet. I, I had assumed that it was automatically coming out and it's not. So we'll have to make a tally sometime in June of what needs to be moved over in that account. And I don't know if there are any other questions that need to be answered or.
Any questions? Any questions for Mrs. Owen? Okay. Um, Mr. Kearney, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, um, well, good job, Susan. We appreciate the, the hard work you did on this budget. The, uh, facilities, uh, as far as the capital budget goes, did we take care of, um, what was I gonna ask you? The, um,
You're gonna ask about the ACs.
Nah, we already.
April vacation, April vacation.
April vacation. Is that going to be done? That, that's great. The other, oh, I know what I was gonna ask. The, um, the software that they were talking about with the two, the, the, um, the town was working with. One of them was called, um, stu-, uh, what was it? Something, something student dude or something? It was, uh,
School dude.
Yeah, but they changed the name of it, something that's, uh, a different name. But it was a really good solution to, um, get a work order and then everybody can track it. Are we working with that system more?
I don't have any access to that system. I do believe that Bob, um, and the custo- custodians and all that, the principals, assistant principals can go in and put in their requests and it goes through the facilities.
Right. And that, that way the town and the school are all on the same board. Is there any way we can maybe set up a demo and go over that with, um, at, at the facilities finance committee? Or so that we can see exactly how to track, uh, some of our work orders so that we can all see it?
Sure. I can, I can check with Nick in facilities and see if we can set something up.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for all the work.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Kearney.
Writing that down.
Do you have any questions for Mrs. Owen? Mrs. Mar.
Um, thank you, Mrs. Owen, for the report. You're correct. In utilities, it was electric and heat weren't, uh, the February invoices weren't accounted for. So that's about fifty thousand dollars. I mean, overall, if you, we've encumbered about, um, eight hundred thousand dollars more than we did last year. So our percent to total, we're in good shape. With the biggest driver of that being salaries is in really good shape. I did, um, ask Mrs. Owen to, to really kind of take a look at special education as she mentioned. And we, we're going to need to start looking at where our year-end balance is going to be and what, um, transfers we might need to make to offset some of these shortfalls. On the, um, revolving accounts, we can't really go into the negative. They would zero out, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. So if kindergarten is expended, it zeros out. It doesn't, it doesn't go negative. And then the two new grants we got, um, the E S S R two and the COVID prevention fund, do they have expiration dates or can they carry forward into the next school year?
The forty-four thousand from the COVID, I believe it expires this June. But we'll exhaust that pretty quickly. Just, just for the, you know, the C I C, the, the testing that we're doing is fifteen to twenty thousand off, off the top of my head. So that will go. The, the second one, the one and eighty-three, um, I, I applied for it for now, but it carries over till June of twenty-three.
June of twenty, so for two years.
I'm trying to think. Is it?
No, it is.
Twenty-one, twenty-two. It's June of twenty-three.
The S O two goes through twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, okay.
And then any, I think, uh, we may have more funding coming.
Which is, there is, right, there is talk of, um,
Much larger mom.
The county, state giving money to the counties. The other thing, I, I had a conversation with the town accountant and they're also getting, you know, their, their piece of the, I don't know if it's called E S S E R on their end. They initially got about eight hundred thousand dollars the beginning of the year to help, um, offset with all the COVID expenditures and they're expecting to get another eight hundred and forty thousand. So he said, um, he wants me to put together a plan of what, what we think we're gonna be, we're gonna spend over the course of the year. How we're going to utilize our new grants and the town will obviously help out because a good portion of their money is also to go towards the school. So, um, I think we're in pretty good shape in the, the COVID pandemic situation with money.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Mar, I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions.
The wheel here. Mrs. St. Orange, thank you. Okay. Neither, neither do I. We touched on the kindergarten issue. Thank you. Um, so does that conclude your, uh, your monthly update, Mrs. Owens?
Um, I have two other things that are kind of going to tag into that. One of them is, I know at one time we talked about, um, no renting of facilities. But now that some of the restrictions are being lifted, um, I'm, I'm having questions from, um, different people that want it, they want to rent like outside, like the Boy Scouts want to rent the parking lot at Dearhill, um, or the Fields. And I didn't know if the school committee wanted to consider at least opening up rentals to outside, rentals only. Versus outdoors, right. You want to continue, you know, not renting any, any part of our facilities.
Makes sense to do it. I, I, um, it's not an explicit agenda item. That's the issue. If we're gonna like vote on anything, it's, I don't know if I'm, uh, it's not something that we actually noted on the agenda. So, um, to take action on it, I don't, I'm not sure that, um,
Can we put it on the, um, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, we, we could do, we could do that. Mrs. Marty, have a suggestion?
Well, when we voted to suspend renting facilities, it was for the winter season. So the winter season is over and therefore technically we revert back to our policy.
That's true. It, it is an operational function, but because of the pandemic, it was something that we, we definitely wanted. And actually in the winter, we were working with the town and we, we did feel that we wanted to bring it to the school committee's attention because we, we really needed to help, help with that decision, um, and guidance. You know, it, operationally, I, I feel for outside rentals, as long as they're following appropriate rules, I, I would feel outdoor rentals, I'd feel more, I'd feel comfortable doing that in a limited way. I would not feel comfortable inside right now.
So I don't necessarily disagree, but, but, so I, I think we need to put it on the agenda for the special meeting that we're having next week. Because I, I don't like, if we're gonna make a decision on something deliberate on something, I think it should be posted on the agenda as something as a topic of discussion. All right. So, um, why don't we do that? And, 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 uh, Mrs. Owen, just make sure that, uh, that, uh, Mrs. Sarita knows about that and, uh, and when we can make sure that that happens. I mean, it's not going to be a long discussion. It's just something that I, I don't know that we're, you know, it's, it's right to decide anything without putting on the agenda. What's the other issue that you mentioned?
The other is just more of an informational. So we've been searching and searching for drivers for our Metco routes. Um, uh, two Metco drivers have quit. We've advertised probably for six months. Pat and I spoke, we went out to bid. We put the Metco transportation out to bid. So, um, basically we've contracted it out. So we awarded the bid or would like to award the bid to, we had two bidders. Um, one was for a student and one was local motion. Locomotion was definitely the low bidder by three hundred thousand dollars less. So the bid would be awarded to the local motion. They'll start transporting as soon as we can get the contract ready and they can get trained. But the date they were shooting for was April twelfth, um, which frees up two of our buses, which we could utilize for our in-house, in-town, um, transportation. So I just, that's just an FYI. You know, it will save us on drivers, health insurance, bus, you know, purchasing more buses if we ever needed to, which right now we don't. Fuel, um, it's all rolled into the contract and the Metto grant, um, supports that. They have a, a large line item in their grant for transportation. So it will fund that. It's just, it was more of a just an informational. So if you see different set of buses coming through or if you see extra buses doing in-house runs, we will now have nine buses to transport inside Cohasset. And then we'll have two Metco runs handled by locomotion. And then they have a spare bus on the side, just in case we need it. And they also provide, um, any sports or late buses for the Metco students as well. So.
Great. And can you tell me, uh, tell the committee, local motion, who, just some of the towns that they've helped?
Oh.
Work with.
Needham was, yeah, that they're, they transport Needham student and I didn't, I don't have the bids with me.
List was impressive.
It was, yeah.
Brookline?
Brookline was the other one. Correct.
Either way, good news, the positive development, I think, for the district is going to be great, especially for a district with limited resources. So thank you for that information, Mrs. Owen. That's, that's great. Thank you. Thank you all for, for doing that. Does that conclude the finance, uh, report, Mrs. Owen?
Yes, it, yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So moving on, as you recall, we all voted to, uh, sort of move, uh, public comment till now. So here we are, public comment, part two. Mrs. Caleri, do you have, uh, the comments that were, uh, registered earlier?
Yep. Jenna Jones Cunningham. First, I acknowledge my comment does not address an agenda item and the weight of this meeting and its comments should certainly be devoted to getting middle school, high school back in full time. Having said that, my concern is very pressing. My family, as all kindergarten families in Cohasset this year, was charged full tuition, thirty-five hundred dollars for the hybrid instruction that continued through February. My child was in-person two days to My child was in-person two days to most weeks and most will agree that remote instruction is not appropriate for kindergartners. My husband and I have previously paid full day kindergarten tuition for two older children in Cohasset with little hesitation. This year, we had serious concerns with paying the full $3,500, given the lack of instruction our child received. Earlier this month, we received a notification that our daughter will no longer be able to attend kindergarten as of April 1st unless we pay kindergarten tuition in full. This is the last school committee meeting prior to that date and it feels like it needs to be noted. Many neighboring communities such as Hangon waived tuition in full this year. Cohasset reimbursed kindergarten families for the remote months last school year. A recent petition regarding the char, charge in full for full day kindergarten tuition, $3,500 this school year, 2021, was distributed to many families of kindergarten students. The results of this petition after one day of distribution were sent to Mr. Craig McLellan earlier this evening. While in its infancy, the document has accounted for input from the families of 22 full-day kindergartners, approximately 23%. They have expressed notable concerns with this year's tuition in light of the unique challenges the hybrid model presented for this age group and respectfully request the committee reconsider its decision and address the request for at least a partial, partial refund. This is, this is, sorry, people keep commenting. This is, and it bumps them up. This is in the context of neighboring communities such as Hangon refunding deposits early on and waiving tuition in full.
Okay.
Can I just clarify something?
Sure.
I feel like the, I don't know if I misheard it. The language in that comment said that the child would no longer be able to attend kindergarten. And I just want to clarify that the letter most likely said, though I have not read it, would not be able to attend full day kindergarten because the tuition covers the full day portion, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
That's a very big difference. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Um. So.
Are there, are there other comments related to this sort of issue?
So Anna Mcnevin said, I would like to voice the same concern as Jenna Jones Cunningham. These kids won't be enrolled in kindergarten as of April 1st. So to your point, it's they would be enrolled in half-day kindergarten as of April 1st. Uh, can we address, can we address this during section G? So obviously we're not doing that. Jenna Jones Cunningham, could you explain the stabilization fund? Thank you. Jenna Jones Cunningham, could you explain more with the kindergarten account will zero out versus going into negative? So I guess maybe she's asking for clarification on what the difference is between a revolving count, a revolving account being drawn down to zero versus going into negative.
Ms. Owen, can you explain that? Or?
I, yeah, I can, I mean, so through the revolving account is, is based, it's fee-based. So it can't go into the negative. What, what will happen is if we expend it down to zero, the school budget would have to offset the deficit. And we don't have it built into the school budget. So the kindergarten program as a whole is about 700,000. So 350 is funded by the school budget and then 350 is generated by fee. The unfortunate part, you know, and I, I completely understand what parents are saying, but the unfortunate part is in order, in order to reduce the fee, we would, we would have had to lay off our kindergarten teachers. We paid our kindergarten teachers. So expenditures are the same. We paid all of our teachers full-time, full days. So our expenditures are still $701,000 versus if we, you know, if we gave, if we were to give a refund, we would either have to expend it from the school budget. There would be, we would have had to have laid off teachers and, and cut their pay or reduce their positions. And that's kind of where the, the disconnect is. I mean, because it's a fee-based program, it's based on, you know, the fee is based on how many participants, how many classes we have, six kindergarten classes, six aides, split it in half. School budget pays half, parents pay half. So because we didn't reduce kindergarten, the kindergarten teacher's salary, we don't have, we don't have extra money. And that, that's what I was trying to say earlier. I mean, right now, a carryout that we started out with was $48,000, which is low compared to past years. But that was partly because we gave a refund last year. So we started out with a lower amount. Our revenue to date is about 239,000. Our expenditures to date are 206. So that, you know, we still have about 35,000 to be collected, which we have not collected yet. We've been, you know, we've been chasing. There's been emails sent. There's been invoices quarterly sent. There was phone calls made a couple of weeks ago. So all that being said, we, we still have, we still have a, let me see. We still have $141,000 left in expenditures from now till the end of the year. And we have 82,000 left and 35,000 to be collected. So there's going to be a shortfall in that account of about $21,000. And I don't know, you know, that's something that the school committee will, you know, has to discuss. But that's, that's kind of where we're at. So it's not like we have the money sitting there to refund right now because we had to fund, we, we didn't, we, we funded the teachers at 100%.
Thank you, Mrs. Owen. Ms. Colari, any other comments, public comments?
No.
Okay. So moving on to school committee comments and communication, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, because I'm, I'm going to ask for a motion when we get to, the topic's not reasonably anticipated because, I mean, these folks are looking for some sort of like response to their, you know, conundrum. And I mean, you know, you know, it's not an agenda item, but you know, to, you know, to their point, you know, they're, they're looking to address this by April. They're told that they're not going to be able to take care, you know, be welcomed into full-time kindergarten if they don't pay. So I'm going to ask for a motion on that when we get to the point. I mean, this is really a public comment. We're not really, you know, supposed to be responding or, you know, even responding, but certainly not voting on something. So I'm just going to call for motion G. If there's a motion, there's a motion. If it's seconded, it's seconded. And then we can have a vote if, 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 if that's what happens. So, but, but for now, we'll just move on with the agenda and that's the school committee comments and communication, which is section E. First, we have the policy revisions suggested or proposed by the sub-policy subcommittee. Mrs. Colari and Mrs. St. Ange.
So we included for a first read, but perhaps maybe even a vote in this packet, policy FB. And it's the facilities planning policy. Our current policy does, or our current binder does include file FB. It's just a slight, there are redlined, well, blue-lined versions of text in here for your consideration. And it essentially more accurately reflects the school facilities committee composition rather than just sort of like a general unnamed, it says a building committee. So I just, we reviewed it and thought we would make it more specific.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Colari. Mrs. St. Ange, do you have anything to add to that presentation?
I do not.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Mrs. Mark?
Um, I just have a comment that I don't know if you want to add as a legal reference, the Cohasset bylaw, which is, and I don't know the right language, but it's S-30-56, school facilities committee.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Mark?
Nope.
Mr. Kearney, you have anything?
No, but thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Colari, would it be all right with you if we, if I sought a motion to approve the amended version of this E1, excuse me, FB?
Yeah, if the committee has a second, yeah.
Okay. So I'd ask for a motion at this time to approve the policy FB as amended and proposed by the policy subcommittee. Is there a motion that affect on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar. All in favor, please indicate your own roll call. Mrs. Colari?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mark?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Hi, Craig McLone, motion, Nancy Carries. Mrs. Colari, this is the newly approved version of policy FB.
Thank you. I have one other announcement. There is some planning underway for some celebrations this summer in Cohasset. And Carrie Thompson from the select board and I have had the good fortune of gathering a few committee members and is very, very newly formed by committee members. I mean, just like on this informal committee that just exists of townspeople. It's not like a formal thing yet. To plan Pride Month here in Cohasset this year in June. And we also are seeking student and community member input on celebrations around Juneteenth and Loving Day. So Juneteenth is a celebration of African-American independence on June 19th, which also coincides with the Arts Festival and Father's Day, which is very exciting. And Loving Day is the anniversary of the Supreme Court decision legalizing interracial marriage. And that is on June 12th, so exactly one week before Juneteenth. So there are some celebrations being planned and some educational opportunities being planned. And any community members who are interested in participating in these things, I encourage you to please email me. My, I think my email address is on the school website under school committee, but it's akolari@cohassetk12.org. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Colari. Any, well, that's the end of the policy revisions, I suppose. Next is the school facilities committee, just a brief report. As you all know, we approved our nominees for that committee, but the select board and town moderator have yet to approve any nominees. They are, I did have a discussion with them. They're in the, the process of, of trying to market and or recruit participants for this committee. And they are aware that time is of the essence. And it is our hope that we will, we will have a committee that is, if not fully constituted, at least a, a, an acting quorum in the coming months and that, you know, some forward-moving progress will be made this year on that front. So, you know, there is progress being made there. It's just sort of, it's slow to be made, but, but the right entities are aware of the necessary moves that need to happen in the coming weeks. I have no other reports. Mr. Kearney, do you have any reports? Mr. Kearney is gone again. Mr. Kearney keeps on fooling me. Mrs. Mar, do you have any reports?
Um, I don't have any reports, just a couple of questions. At the last meeting, we talked about getting a statement of interest to the MSBA for the rooftop air handlers. Where are we on that?
I do not know.
Um, they haven't, they haven't put the application up yet. I talked to Michelle Larry yesterday. And I asked her to get me the, the woman's name and number. I know her name was Marie from the MSBA. But Michelle took a quick look and said that they haven't put the applications up yet.
Okay. Um, but have we like turned in even like a, a statement of interest?
No, that's what the statement of interest on, it's an application you have to fill out and they haven't posted it.
Yeah, I remember last time, Ellen, they, they opened up a window.
Yes.
That's when you have to submit your statement of interest. And I guess what Sue's saying is the window.
It's not open yet.
Okay. All right.
Did they indicate when the window is going to open?
She didn't, Michelle didn't, Michelle didn't know. But I'm waiting for her to give me the number because I want to call, I want to call the woman directly to get more information on what, what exactly the program is.
Yeah, I think maybe if you Google MSBA, you'll find us a con, a contact us link. And Diane Sullivan was the one who, she gave us a presentation in September of 2019. So she's from Cohasset.
Okay. I can do that tomorrow.
Yeah, because I know Michelle's busy. The other thing I wanted to mention is I've been, I've been watching the advisory and, and select board agendas and they're starting to review other town budgets. So I expect that will be called on fairly soon. Um, you know, I think they're doing police and fire next week or the week after. And maybe we have a subcommittee meeting to kind of shore up our presentation. I think we need to have data on revolving funds, enrollment, you know, with, with yearly comparisons, FTEs. Sue, I know, I had some questions for you on that. So maybe if we have a subcommittee meeting next week. And if I looked, I've looked at a couple of districts. Hangon has a really nice presentation. And one of the things that they did, and this goes back to my comment about the learning gaps, is they actually articulated in their budget presentation, the decline in grades, for example, and I'm making this up because I didn't memorize it, but say they had at the middle school level, 75% of their grades were Bs and As or, you know, B plus or higher. Now it's down to 67 or whatever the number is. They had some, some data to support some of their needs in terms of the learning gaps. And they were right up in front and center on the learning gaps and what was going to be needed. And I, I just think it's something that we have in our budget with the reading specialist and the special education teacher. And I think if we have some data to back it up, that, that would be important. And again, I just think they, they have a nice presentation and Situat has a nice one as well. I would encourage everybody to take a look because we, we know advisory is going to be tough. They're always tough. They're always tough on FTEs. They're tough on enrollments with a declining enrollment. We have a, you know, it's going to be a challenging conversation. So I'll send out a note about maybe getting together next week for, for a budget update, FY22.
Ellen, I did see the Hangon presentation where the Situ went. I think that's part of the work we're doing in this professional development too, you know, is to, is to look at that, look at those gaps. And we have all those assessments. So pulling that together, you know, is, is what we hope to have be a long-term plan and report, which is certainly one of the items on our goals is, is absolutely, you know, coming. We just, we just haven't had a chance to, to, you know, find a time to, to put this information together and present it because of all the other pressing.
And I'm just thinking one page, Patrick. It, it doesn't have to be extensive, you know.
No, it's good. It's a good idea.
For the budget, for the FY22 budget.
Yep. Good idea.
Okay.
I like it.
That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Sorry, I was muted. Okay. And listen, anyone else have anything else? St. Ange, did we skip you?
You did again, but that's okay. I actually missed my Deer Hill Council meeting this week because I forgot about it. So I have nothing to report and I will have reports next.
I was trying to give you an out there, but.
It's okay. Full disclosure.
All right. Well, moving on to the next agenda item is the approval of minutes. We do have a si, a single set of minutes to approve tonight. Those are the minutes from the September 16, 2020 meeting? Am I reading that correctly? Okay. All members were present. So all members may vote. Any questions or comments, revisions, suggestions? Mrs. Colari?
No, thank you.
Mr. Kearney, any suggestions or comments related to the, the minutes of the September 16, 2020 meeting? Mr. Kearney's not here. Mrs. Mar, do you have any suggestions or comments?
No comments.
Mrs. St. Ange?
None.
And I have none. So is there a motion on the floor to approve the agenda, excuse me, approve the, the school committee meeting minutes for the September 16, 2020 meeting on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mars. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Colari. All in favor, Mrs. Colari?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney is not here still. Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McLone. Motion carries the vote of four and one member absent. So those meeting minutes are approved. So moving on. So those meeting minutes are approved. So moving on to Section G. Like I said, I, I am going to ask for a a motion to reconsider reimbursement of kindergarten tuition at this moment in time. Is there a motion to that effect? On the floor?
Can I just clarify though? Are we, so we're just voting to have a discussion about it?
Well, well, let's, sure, good point, Mrs. St. Ange. Let's have a discussion about it. The public comments raised, great break point. So the, the public comments raised expressed concern that individuals paid the full amount or are asked to be, or asked, have asked to pay the full amount of the kindergarten tuition for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. And for kindergarten, full-time. Families are expressing the desire through a petition that last I checked had twenty-one signatures of how many total? I don't know, probably about a hundred and ten or something. I don't know what the enrollment is in kindergarten. But it's probably around a hundred and ten or so. So just probably under twenty percent at this point. And to the petition drafter's point, this is, which is just circulated today, so there may be more support for it, I don't know. But people have expressed the desire to be reimbursed at this moment in time. And they are citing that the pandemic, the hybrid operations as the reason for that, that it's unfair, that they didn't get, you know, full in-person kindergarten. So are there any discussion points on this matter? I'll just go in alphabetical. I'll go in reverse alphabetical order. Mrs. St. Ange, since you reminded me that we hadn't even discussed it yet while I was looking for a motion.
I guess I have a few concerns about just saying right now that we're going to reimburse. So I know reimbursement was given last school year, acknowledge that. I think it's important to note that well, I don't know what the numbers were last year, but, but, but people had already, we need people to pay first and to have the full amount to be working with to run our program, right? And then, and then we considered later in the year and took into consideration a a reimbursement. So I just, I'm wondering if it's too early in the school year to even consider that. I also wasn't expecting to speak first, so I'm making, don't have all of my thoughts formulated.
We can go back to you if you want.
Okay, yeah, that's my comment for now.
All right, Mrs. Mar, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yes. Mrs. St. Ange is correct. We, we discussed reimbursements for a variety of fee-based programs at the end of last year when we saw where we were on, from a budgetary perspective. And I think as we articulated tonight, we have concerns with our operational budget with overages in special education, in contract cleaning and supplies. There, there were a number of areas. And I agree with Mrs. Owen, who stated earlier in response to the question, we, we're running a full program and with a designed curriculum. And I'm not minimizing the fact that it's much more challenging, obviously for kindergarteners to learn remotely than it is older children. But we, we're, we're running a full program and I think it's a challenge for parents who have paid already their full tuition to now hear about parents who haven't paid. So I would want to defer this a, any kind of conversation or vote or potential vote until the end of the year when we know what our financial situation is.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mr. Kearney came and then left us again. So, Mrs. Colari?
I would like to clarify that I was, I thought I was making a motion to discuss. I didn't know I was making a motion to do something else, so I apologize for the confusion there. How many people have not paid? Do we know? That exact number?
Hold on a second.
I, I know right now we have about thirty-five thousand that we're still trying to collect.
So.
That was as of today.
Thank you. Um. So, so first thing I feel like I need to clarify is that it seems to me like this tuition is asking the committee to consider a partial reimbursement for full-year kindergarten. And I feel like we can check that box because we have already voted to consider that. It's just that reimbursement would imply that there was tuition paid. So I'm having a hard time with the logistics of this whole thing because in order to get to the point where we're reimbursing people, we need to have paid our teachers. And in order to pay our teachers, we need this money in our account where the money comes from. It's a school budget. It's not like, you know, a joint checking account. You have to pay things from the line items that they were approved to be paid from. So unless I'm unclear about something, it seems like we are putting carts before horses in some places. I am not unsympathetic to this situation. I have a five-year-old and an eight-year-old and I totally understand how labor-intensive it is to get them to digest anything. I promise, I understand that part. The thing is, I feel like it's also important to explain that we as a committee and we as a district inherited this structure for how kindergarten is funded, right? So it's not like this committee decided that this year everyone was going to have to pay thirty-five hundred dollars in tuition. Like this is how, we, we actually, members of this committee have been trying very hard and we actually have made some progress this year with the budget that we're presenting this year to start to cut back on the tuition amount and start to transition toward a, a fully-funded, full-day kindergarten. So we are not unsympathetic to this issue. The problem is that it does not allow us to escape from reality. And the reality is that that your child's teacher is paid through the tuition. And so there is nothing we can do about that at this point in the year. That is the budget that was approved. What we can do, and I feel like what we have demonstrated, we are capable of doing, is at the end of the year, when we have a more accurate picture of what the district's financial situation looks like, we then can try to come up with the most generous reimbursement possible for families that have been in such situations. We did that last year. But to ask for reimbursement for money that hasn't been paid doesn't seem like the right sort of sequence.
I, I do feel it's worth saying again. Sorry, sorry, Mr. McClellan, I'm just.
No, that's fine. I was just, I called Mrs. Colari, Mrs. Mar, and I was going to move on to you anyway.
Okay. I just, I do think it's worth restating, as I clarified when the question was asked. We are not, no one is saying that children cannot go to kindergarten. The half-day option is free of charge, correct?
Yes.
It is the full-day option that requires tuition. And so as designed, if you opt into that option, you pay the tuition. And then at the end of the year, if it's possible, after this very unusual year, we will consider a reimbursement, but the option is there.
So Mrs. Cunningham clarifies that all the parents on the tuition petition have paid. So I apologize. I made an assumption based on the letter reference in the initial comment.
Okay, so I, I think that the, one of the important parts of what the request is, is they want us to commit to the reimbursement now because they're being asked to pay by April and they're not, so they, they, and, and, you know, and you know, whether they, they're not going to pay, then they don't get to continue full-time kindergarten, but they, this is the last meeting before that, you know, occurs and we should be making a decision now. And I think, as I think everyone articulated, it's impossible to make a responsible and intelligent decision right now about that. And I can tell you that, you know, I think there were about fifty-some-odd days, in-person days, that are normally offered, that weren't offered because of, not because we decided that we didn't want to do it, because we couldn't, because it was a hybrid model. And so if you prorate it, it's, you know, it's about, it's about, it comes down to about a thousand dollars a family. If you're looking at like how much, it's about twenty dollars a day. Okay, comes down to, I did the calculations, it's about a thousand dollars. We'd have to pay out to each family if you want a full reimbursement for the in-person days you didn't get. So that's, that's a hundred thousand dollars or over a hundred thousand dollars that we just have to conjure up somehow that we don't have. We don't have it. So, and, and, and as you heard, there's, you know, a third of that or over a third of that is, is, we're still collecting. We're still trying to collect that. People haven't paid, so you know, I, I don't understand, it, it's, to me, the request at this point defies reason, given the fact that we're just not in a position to make an intelligent decision on this. And we told, we said, we, 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 we discussed this issue at the beginning of the year and that's, we are sympathetic to it. And that's why we discussed it. And we asked, we expressly asked the administration during a school committee meeting to prioritize this. And that's why it's been on Mrs. Owen's radar and it has been on all of our radars, but we knew that we weren't going to be addressing it till the end of the year. So just, to just all of a sudden say, no, we, you know, we, you know, we, we want you to reconsider reimbursement now. It's not because we don't want to, we don't feel like it. It's because it's impossible to know whether we have the money to do it. I mean, I can say, you know, from my knowledge of the budget to a fairly high degree of certainty, that we're not going to have a hundred thousand dollars to be doling out to, to, to folks at the end of the year. It's been a really challenging year budget-wise for, for obvious reasons. And, you know, there are grants and you see grants being awarded, but those grants are earmarked for certain activities. It's not like, it's just like money that's dumped into our account and we can use it for whatever we want. It's, it's for certain, you know, specific purposes. So, you know, my position is like, look, I mean, I have little kids too. And, and one of them, you know, last year when the pandemic started, you know, I, they went to a daycare facility and it was just canceled. And there was no reimbursement of tuition, so I know how frustrating that is. And, you know, and, and, and it was just about the full amount of kindergarten tuition that, 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 that we, that we basically lost. So I, I, I get it, but you, you just can't make something out of nothing. And so you know, people can be aggravated about it. It's, it's not fair. I, I agree. I mean, if someone else paid X amount of dollars for something two years ago and, and got more and the same person is paying the same amount, or the different person's paying the same amount and got, and you got something different, I get it. There's, there, you know, there's, it's inequitable, but this isn't something we decided, you know, it's something that we had to react to and we're doing the best we can. But until we get to the end of the year, there's no way to determine what amount, if any, we're going to be able to offer in reimbursement of kindergarten tuition. And there are a lot of other budget items or expenses that frankly, you know, might have to be prioritized above that in order to sort of, you know, push the district forward. You know, but, but, you know, we're certainly, it's definitely something that we're going to be looking at. We already said that. So I don't know, is there anything, Mr. Kearney, you're back on the, you're back on the meeting. Can you hear us?
Yes, again, I want to apologize. I'm actually on business in New Jersey, so I have like the worst, it just, I'm getting one percent charged, so I got to make this quick. I just want to say to the parents that do have kindergarten kids, children, that we are totally sympathetic and empathetic to what they're going through. It's been this committee's goals is to get it so that kindergarten is free. We have twenty thousand dollars that we put towards that, so that's exactly what we're trying to do. I would say that we suggest that we do a finance and facilities committee and dive deep into seeing what we can do. I agree with you, Craig, that it is something, it is what it is. We have our budgets and, and it's something that is there. However, you know, this committee would, would love to have kindergarten paid for free like other communities. And we've been pushing for that. It's going to take time. We try to get money from the state. There's, it, there's involvement there where they would pay, the first year they pay seventy-five percent of the, of the fees and then fifty percent and then twenty-five percent. And it was out there and unfortunately our state regis, legislators didn't vote for it. And, you know, that's what we're up against. We're up, we're up against that it's thirty-five hundred dollars a year, which I think is huge amount of money, especially to a family that's just trying to get, get there, get out there. You know, your property taxes are ten thousand, you add thirty, thirty-five hundred. And as Susan mentioned earlier, you got twins like I do, you're talking seven thousand dollars a month. I mean, a year. So we're very empathetic and we're parents and we appreciate everything you do. So what I would suggest we do is do a finance facilities committee, dig down deep and see what we can do for the parents or the hard-working parents at Cohasset, because we do support you. And, and we, we have to make some.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kearney. You know, and two other points, you know, so that's a great point. We are currently trying to work into the budget a reduction of the tuition so that we can get a step closer every year to free kindergarten. That's how we're sort of answering that. So we're not, we're not plagued with this problem year after year, but it's again, something that takes time. We can't, you know, enact that overnight. And while that doesn't help these parents that are looking for reimbursement of whatever, you know, amount of hours they didn't see in the classroom, it's still, you know, it shows that we're, we're, you know, certainly aware of and cognizant of the problem of the issue. And, and the other issue, the other, the other point I want to make is this budget for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year was approved, finalized, drafted and finalized and approved well before anyone knew what was going to happen. So we just, we, we kept in line with what we had done in other years relative, relative to kindergarten program. And it's not as though we decided when we looked at the face of, you know, the pandemic and how it was impacting the students and the families and they weren't going to be in there. And we said, that's all right, we'll just still, you know, no problem, like, you know, just carry on as usual. I mean, we had already budgeted for that. So we're, we're relying on that money as, as Mrs. Owen pointed out when she was discussing the budget. So any, anything else from anyone? Mrs. Mrs. St. Ange?
Yeah, I just can't even unmute anymore. I know I'm perseverating on this issue and I just, I guess I'm confused and I don't have documents in front of me and maybe I sound like a loon, but in, in the language of the letter and, and some of the language of the questions, it stated that letters were received that said people would not have full-day kindergarten after April first or whatever. And that letter would only be received if tuition had not been paid, correct? Okay. I just want to clarify because I just feel like there's some contradicting statements that are out there, saying people did pay, but you wouldn't receive, if you have paid tuition, you would not have received a letter, correct? Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry to keep coming back to this. It's just I can't get over it. I just, I'm stuck on it. I'm sorry.
So, like I said, you know, they, they, they want us to reconsider, they want us to reconsider the reimbursement this time and, you know, decide to reimburse families of, you know, kindergarten tuition at this time. You know, that's the request that's put out there. I'm happy to entertain a motion if there is any on the floor and it has to be seconded and then approved by majority vote. So is there a motion to that effect at this point? I see no motion, so we will take no action on that. Moving into the next agenda item, executive session, there's no reason to move into executive session. And that brings us to the last agenda item, which is the adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn at this time?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Colari, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar. All in favor, Mrs. Colari?
Aye.
Mrs. Kearney's absent. Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, motion carries, vote of four and one absent member. So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
All right.